Good evening, and we'll call the meeting to order, and as normal, we'll start with Chapin Grubbs with our invocation.
Shall we take a moment? Oh, Lord hear our prayer. You have taught us to be thankful in all things, to not be anxious about tomorrow, and to pray always, and so we do. Thankful for the surprise of winter snow. It reveals your beauty, awakens our joy, and challenges our daily path. So often, we are anxious about tomorrow, so help us to trust the strength of your grace and peace to steady us as we walk your path. We entrust to you the women and men of this board and their efforts to hold, manage, and lead in the use of our resources for health and healing. It is on their shoulders and in their heart. Guide, lead, and sustain with your graceful care in all of their decisions. Weave that thread of care through all those in our community who care so much about our hospital, so that all of our efforts are united as one and made sacred by the breath of your spirit. Whisper to our heart your holy words. Those who hope in you will renew their strength, will soar on wings like eagles, will run and not grow weary, will walk and not grow faint. Amen.
Thank you. You have before you the agenda tonight, and I do know of any changes. A special guest. As you can see, we have a lot of guests tonight. Thank you for joining us. My wife and stepson are here for the first time in six years I've been chairing this, so y'all have to be nice to them. And also Trey is here, so we've got some, like I said, thank you for joining us tonight. There is a sign-up sheet going around. We're supposed to have a record of everyone's attendance. I see it in the back, so if you just make sure that it makes its way around for everybody, I would appreciate that. I'm going to read a few, some opening remarks, and I hope you will humor me and let me read it because I don't want to leave anything out. So, "Good evening, and thanks for joining us. It shows your concern for Erlanger. It is my privilege to serve as the Chair of the Board of Erlanger. In the six years I've been on the Board, I've come to view my role as trustee as more of a passion than a task or duty. And more than that, I've come to appreciate each and every employee and physician of this great institution. I've also come to appreciate more than ever that this institution depends as much on goodwill and trust to succeed as it does on cash flow. The Erlanger Hospital system isn't like any other business in our area. It is a unique community asset that matters greatly to every family in the region. As a result, we receive tremendous support and appreciation, and an equal measure of scrutiny, advice, and a variety of opinions. We are here tonight because questions have been raised about certain decisions the Board made recently regarding compensation. As we begin the meeting, we should acknowledge that there may be differences of opinion represented in this room tonight. There are those that believe our actions were unwarranted and handled incorrectly. I hear you, and I respect your views. Others feel equally strongly that we took exactly the right action and did so in the proper way. I appreciate their views, too. Tonight, I do not plan to debate what was done correctly or incorrectly. It is sufficient to say that we could have done things differently. We will learn from this experience and use it to make a stronger, more effective Board of Trustees. We have already initiated change to the way we handle our committee and Board meetings to ensure that we follow the strictest interpretation of the Sunshine Law and also the full spirit of the law. Personally, I know every Board member is deeply committed to the best interest of Erlanger. I am also confident that the individuals that have concerns over our recent actions are equally committed to Erlanger's long-term success. Over the last couple of years, Erlanger's financial health has improved significantly. At the same time, the capital investment and quality of care for patients have improved. We shouldn't discount these achievements. Countless communities across the country wish they could say their community hospitals were experiencing similar performance. But we can't be complacent or overconfident. Healthcare is an intensely competitive business undergoing transformational change. To maintain and improve Erlanger, we will have to make many difficult decisions in the months and years ahead. And most important of all, we will have to prove we can continue to work together. The question tonight is how to balance community concern about confidentiality and compensation with the Board's responsibility to attract and retain the best possible talent and pursue the smartest possible strategies. This is what we're going to discuss this evening. Just to set the record straight, no decisions will be made. There will not be a vote. This evening's agenda is focused on reviewing the four agenda items from the Board's December 4 meeting. There needs to be new and substantial reconsideration of each item. There is no need to defend the previous actions, as this will only serve to be divisive. Since we have a lot of material to review, I hope everyone will be patient, as this might take some time. My plan is to allow ample time for comments from those that have appropriately requested to address the Board, as well as others. I will ask everyone to be respectful of persons and time. In the end, our joint mission is to strengthen Erlanger. We may disagree about the best path, but I know we agree on the desired outcome. As I said, trust is everything for Erlanger. Through this process, I am hopeful we can arrive at a recommended course of action that enhances our standing in the community while also providing the proper level of support for the management team, so they can continue securing Erlanger's future. Thanks for your interest and your patience tonight. With that, we will move on in our agenda. We'll review the minutes, January 22nd, the minutes of the 22nd meeting that you received in your Board package. Any changes? May I have a motion for approval? Have a motion in a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Subcommittee's and committee and subcommittee reports. Budget and finance?
We did not meet this.
Okay. Joint conference?
No further report.
Okay. Planning?
We did not meet.
Audit and compliance?
We did not meet.
Legal committee, Ms. Stanley?
Yes, we met last week.
Thank you. Management and Board Evaluation? Did not meet. And Personnel, to my knowledge, did not meet.
No, we did not.
And I think that does it for our committee reports. There is no unfinished business, to my knowledge, so we will move into our consent calendar. And on the consent calendar, you have two resolutions, 1502-01 and 1502-02. Do I hear a motion for approval of the consent calendar?
Submove.
Move in a second? All right. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And reconsideration of Resolution 141202, Mr. Gentry?
Thank you. Good evening. I wanted to present as a topic of discussion, as a topic of new and substantial reconsideration, the resolution that approved, that had previously approved, an unbudgeted 2% raise for employees. Our employees, our associates, had last received, and all associates have received, a 2% raise in January of 2014. Additionally, in January of 2014, bedside RNs received a 3% increase. So, 2% for employees other than bedside nurses, and bedside nurses received a 3% raise. Additionally, in July of 2014, RN or bedside nurses received an additional increase. There's a two-phase increase or market adjustment for bedside RNs. The first of those two phases was implemented in July of 2014. The second will be July of 2015. Across the two raises, the average increase is approximately 12%. So, you're running in the neighborhood of 5% to 15% increases for RNs, for the market adjustments. Again, half, basically half, in July of 2014, half in July of 2015. And as we approached January, we were having a strong financial year, and not only a strong financial year, we knew that employees have shown a lot of commitment over the past 12 to 18 months to Erlanger. And not that they haven't over the course of many, many years, but we believe that employees over the past 12 to 18 months have truly stepped up and shown commitment above and beyond, just exceptional commitment to Erlanger Health System. And in one way, they showed a commitment as we stepped away from our paid time off accrual. And we knew that that was a concern of employees. And as we were approaching January of 2015, and listening to employees and listening to ourselves, the paid time off, lack of the paid time off accrual for four pay periods was a concern, was a point of interest. And we asked ourselves as leadership how to approach that particular concern of employees. The actual PTO accrual had been on record as being eliminated for up to nine pay periods so far, an 18-week period. And Kevin had made the commitment that if we had received, if we received notice, that we were going to have access to the public supplemental, the public hospital supplemental pool, that we would reinstate the PTO accrual upon receiving notice. And we received notice. We were only four pay cycles into the nine pay cycles, and so reinstated PTO. But even with that, only stopping the accrual for four of the nine pay cycles, our employees had a concern, and we believed there was tremendous commitment. So, we asked, how might we overcome, you know, the concern? There was no raise, budget for employees in this fiscal year, and we stepped forward and requested of the Board, you approved it, and we implemented the 2% across the board for eligible employees in January of 2015. And that was one way we felt we could satisfy, or at least attempt in good-faith effort, to overcome some of the concerns, or address the concerns regarding the PTO accrual. The cost of the 2% across the board was, is approximately $2.4 million. And in essence, if you look at, on average, what an employee makes, they've lost four days of PTO accrual. Is the 2% across the board or the PTO accrual better served for the employee over the course of time? And actually, the 2% across the board better serves those individuals that receive it. I know there's some question about how do you define eligible employees? And eligible employees included all employees other than those bedside nurses that were participating in the market adjustments July 14 and July 15. So, eligible employees did not provide, did exclude those bedside nurses. Because again, they were receiving, on average, a 12% raise between the July 14 and the July 15 market adjustment. There's also another point of discussion around the raises, and that includes nurses that are long-tenured. And so, I do want to bring to your attention, some of the long-tenured nurses did not receive a market adjustment in July 14. Dr. Jan Keyes is addressing if July 15, those nurses will receive an increase, those long-tenured nurses? And one of the reasons they did not, because they were already well-established in the salary range. And there was some question if they should receive the 2% across the board in January. And the decision that we made was that they were part of the market adjustments for the bedside RNs. Dr. Jan Keyes is addressing with some of the longer-term nurses what we might be able to do in July of 2015. So, the unbudgeted raise in January of 2015 was leadership's approach to helping address the commitment or the concern that our employees shared with us regarding the PTO accrual.
Greg, the 2% across the board, excluding nurses, did that include executives and leadership?
Executives were, was excluded from the 2% raise.
Were excluded from the 2%.
Yes.
What's your definition of executive?
Vice President and above. So, directors and managers, such as nurse manager, such as a Director of Respiratory Therapy, Director of Rehab Services, Director in Accounting, they received the 2% raise. So, Vice Presidents and above did not receive the 2% raise.
How many are there of those?
The management form, that's considered management form, there are probably about 115 to 120 individuals that are classified as a service, as a center of excellence administrator, director, or manager.
Were you asking VP and above?
Yes, I meant VP and above.
Oh, I'm sorry. VP and above, about 20.
Is this how you want us to do this, ask questions now?
Yeah.
Okay. So, there's two pieces, because everybody knows I'm all about nurses. And so, I got the impression that there were some nurses that did not get a market adjustment because they were already at market, which is kind of what you said, the older ones. And then, there's also some, it seemed like the biggest adjustment happened like in the five to 10-year nurses, because we had kind of talked about, that's where we're bleeding from the most.
That's with the highest turnover.
Right. Because we bring them in, we train them in an academic center, they can handle everything, and then we weren't getting close to their pay, and so they leave. But when I talked to some of the nurses, they not only did not qualify for the market adjustment, they also did not get the 2% raise. And so, added to that, we haven't discussed yet, there's a VSN requirement that cost them about $10,000 to do, but we're paying them like $2,500. And so, you know, some of them, especially your older, experienced nurses, and those of us in healthcare, understand, you know, that's an important brain. That brain we don't need to lose. Then, so, you know, they really kind of got caught. If they didn't have a VSN degree, then they needed to spend $10,000 to continue to work, and we were going to pay them to, you know, $2,500. And they did not get the 2% raise or the adjustment, which seemed a slap in the face to our experienced nurses.
Absolutely.
Dr. Keyes couldn't address it?
Yes.
It's complicated, I know it is.
It is complicated, but certainly is something that I heard very clearly, heard it from the nursing staff. So, we immediately established what they titled themselves, the Tenured Nurse Committee. And that's representatives from all the nurses here, east, north, all the campuses, children's. And there's about 40 people that attend. We've been, we've had five meetings, and we've adjusted that, so we will know how we're going to address that this year. We have put in an equitable plan for those that we feel like their attrition will retire, or it will not be feasible for them to go back to school. They will be able to promote to a Level III, and that was the level, I think, that they all said. They felt like they were considered proficient in their nursing, but yet they didn't have a VSN. So, that is phase two. The first phase, as Greg pointed out, had to be, we really had to address our compression issue, you know, across the board raises.
Meaning the people that were leaving.
Right. People that were leaving.
Y'all speak management.
Yes. People that were leaving, and then also nurses that had been here for five and six years that were still making undergrad pay, or just there above. When you give across-the-board raises, which are good, and I'm all for that, but it doesn't always address compression issues. It just keeps, you know, moving everybody that were compressed, so.
And I guess the concern from the physicians is that because of some of the changes that we made, some people had to say, especially with the illness bank, which we all know was kind of unusual to have that. But, so there were some of our really expensive nurse, I mean, not expensive, sorry, really experienced nurses who were in the ICUs and really had, you know, the brains and were teaching the younger nurses who got to, they were actually, it's more beneficial to them from a financial standpoint to take some, because we were going to pay out some of that bank. And so, we lost a lot of experienced nurses there because it was more financially feasible for them. And then, right on heels of that, we had the VSN requirement, and, you know, they're just, that upper tier is just getting slapped around, so I'm glad that you guys have plans. We don't do a good enough job communicating to everybody that we recognize that there's a problem and that we are building a plan. The other thing, our request, and I kind of talked to a couple of you guys about, there's got to be a cheaper way to get a VSN than $500 per hour. There's got to be somebody we can partner with to help our nurses out with that, because it's all online.
Right.
I mean, there's no reason it costs, I mean, $400 or $500 an hour for them to do that.
Right. Well, we have brought in UTC and Chat, Chattanooga State. And what we have come up with, the plan, is that they can get all of their general education courses at Chat State, which is a much cheaper cost per hour.
Any idea how much that is?
It's, the whole total program is about $9,000. That's the whole total program for two years. But with this new agreement with Chat State, that should lessen that a little bit. They haven't given me a number yet, they're still working on it. But it's about $7,000.
But you're still, for a nurses, five years or 10 years away, and it's been, I mean, they just feel disrespected.
Sure, sure. I think that feeling, though, is changing. I just met with them yesterday. I'm not sure if any of the tenured nurses are here. But this is why I feel encouraged, because they are coming up with the criteria that is, when I say equitable, it's not equal to a VSN, but it's equitable. And they are, they really have it together, because they recognize that they, if they're going to get the pay, the recognition, that they have to put out and do more than just be an experienced nurse. In years past, our model was based on experience only. How many years' service do you have? But now, we couple that with education, or as they're coming up with the criteria, it can be certain national certifications and others, and then performance. And you are so right, Dr. Schumaker. One thing I think is key, as hospitals pay for performance, we have to change our nursing model, because we are the crux of everything that happens, like you recognize. So, we have to change our model to push that performance to meet what we're paid for as a hospital. And actually, the nurses have come up with some really good criteria, so I'm looking forward to it, and I think they are, too. But we really had to address, with the first phase, we had to address a compression issue.
Yeah. And I think the whole Board's going to be focusing on this, because, number one, our nurses are the last person between us and patient harm, you know, that happens. I mean, they really are the patient advocate, but also, the second part of that is, a lot of the new criteria that we're going to be paid on is based on how well nurses and physicians communicate to, you know, to patients. And so, the government, I think, has realized that, too, and we're going to be paid on it. So, good, I'm glad that you guys are addressing that.
You'll hear more. We'll keep you updated.
Good, that'd be great. And I think everybody wants to hear more.
Okay.
Other questions?
Thank you. Yes, Natals?
That discussion went on quite long.
Sorry. Y'all wanted me to talk.
Greg, I want to, I want to ask you a question about the group of people that not included with nurses, and not included with the executive staff. Everybody that got the 2% raise. As I understood what you said a minute ago, that the 2% raise was provided to offset the fact that you had taken away the PTO, paid time off.
Was one of the reasons, yes.
Okay. What was the cost of PTO to the hospital?
The overall.
For this group of people we're talking?
So, the overall cost for the PTO was about $3.2 million.
A year?
Yeah, for the, the overall, not cost, but the savings to, to, so the cost to the employees, the savings for the company was about $3.2 million.
But those are one-time savings?
The one-time savings.
And that included other people other than this?
Yeah.
So, if you're comparing one group, I think that Rob said it really well, the average employee makes approximately $20 an hour?
Yeah. So, if you, if you work through it, it's 3.2, but in this cost, this, the 2% raise was 2.4. However, like Kevin was saying, it's not apples-to-apples comparison, because 3.2 was for the entire employee population or associate population. And if you take an average employee that makes about $20, $21, $22 an hour, a 2%, that's about $45,000 a year. 2% of that is $900. And if you take that same employee, and it was four days, which is approximately 37 and a half hours, you know, for easy, easy math, you round it to 40, 40 times 22 is $880. So, you can see, and I was rounding up to 40, 37 and a half, we're bringing it down to, you know, 800. So, in essence, the 2% raise typically for an average employee exceeded the cost of the employee for the lack of accruing for four pay periods.
Well, the question, the question.
It's every year, right? And then, that was then built into the base. So, long-term, not only did it equal the amount of money that they were taking away, the benefit was suspended, so it's just, they still had the PTO, they just suspended the accrual. Ended up being about four days for each person. We said, instead of us giving that back, because we went to Wall Street and we said that was one of the accomplishments, could we do something else? And we went to the Board, we asked for an unbudgeted 2% increase that we could give to the employees. Not only did it equal that, but it was added to the base, and ultimately, the employees benefited by this action.
Right. But the question I got is, after, after your explanation, now the question is, is did they really get a raise?
From my perspective, yes. Remember that the pal, the lack of pal accrual for the four pay cycles is a one-time lack of pal accrual. They were able to use their vacation time. No accrued hours were eliminated from employees. So, if an employee had 250 PTO hours accrued, as we went into this, the four pay cycles where we did not accrue, they still had 250. If an employee wanted to utilize those 250 hours, they were still able to do so. So, that was a one-time action. The 2% raise went into effect, and remember, we gave a 3%, a 2% and a 3% to bedside nurses, unbudgeted raise in January of 2014 also. And in January of 15, we had the market adjustments to bedside nurses, July of 14. And then, in January of 15, the 2% unbudgeted raise. And the 2% unbudgeted raise to, to the base pay, it will be perpetual, so it will be year over year, and it will compound as additional across-the-board raises are given. So, from my perspective, the 2% was a true, was a true raise.
And one additional, can I add one thing, too, that this is not only a salary increase, but it also, when you talk about the premium hours, and we've talked about it in the budget finance, that 2% also impacts the W-2, when they work overtime, callback. So, all those premium payments also went up to 2%.
In addition to the premium payments, all your salary-sensitive benefits, such as your savings in a 403B program, the company match becomes larger, your life insurance increases, so those salary-sensitive benefits escalate also when you give a raise, a cross- the board raise to the base pay.
Dr. Schumaker?
Okay. So, one of the things that I think as we went through this process, the employees felt like their benefit package was generous, but they also were underpaid compared to market. And it's hard to work here. I don't know if we have data about, you know, what our nursing, I mean, we have the sickest patients, and we have some difficult patients by nature of, you know, how they come into, what they come in with, like the trauma patients, et cetera. So, one of my fundamental question is, as we went through decreasing this very generous benefit package, which I don't care what my benefits are, I care what my paycheck says, and I know everybody else is, how much of this can I spend? That's not the way that the hospital has to look at it, because you have to pay the benefit package, too. So, I heard a rumor that Memorial froze their pension this year, too. I didn't really see it reported anywhere, I just kind of heard that. So, one of my questions, and I think everybody needs clarity on, is where are we now with our benefit package compared to the other hospitals in the community? Because that's really who we're competing with, you know, or, I mean, did we take that hit? Because we were truly incredibly, incredibly rich, and I think we all need to know, if you leave here, you're going to get a better deal when you go somewhere else. So, do you have some numbers or ideas on that?
Yeah. I can make a few remarks or comments regarding our employee benefit package. We have historically had an above-market benefits package, such as the traditional pension plan. You haven't seen those in standard industry, and also in the hospital industry for years and years. And back in the late 1980s, when the accounting guidelines changed for how you had to account for post-retirement benefits or early retirement benefits, industry started moving away from providing medical coverage to retirees, and also, they started moving away from the traditional pension plan. So, that's been going on for years and years. And with that in mind, Memorial, we kept our traditional pension plan until this past year, when it was frozen on July 1 of 2014. Memorial also had a pension plan. They also, without the public announcement that we, we provide, or our organization, you know, is, faces, they also froze their pension plan last year. And they have a 401K program at this time. Employees can receive up to, it's either 5% or 6%, I believe it's 6%. In our plan, 403B, which is a mirror image of a 401K program, our employees can receive up to 5%. And those individuals that were hired prior to July 1, 2009, as we transitioned from the traditional pension plan to the 403B plan, for those, that group of associates, they can receive an additional 2.5%. So, for that population, which is a large population, they can receive 7.5% funding from the company. 3% is a base contribution regardless if the employee invests themselves. And then, the other is based on if the employee invests in the 403B plan, making payroll contributions. So, 5% to our employees, 7.5% for those employees hired prior to 2009, July 1 of 2009.
So.
If you, okay. So, if you look at our overall benefits, that re- So if you look at our overall benefits, that repositioned pension, so it is a, it's more competitive in our market and across industries than being above market. Other than that, 2.5%, that's still above market where those individuals, that population are receiving the 7.5%. And then if you walk across, let's take, for example, our vacation program, our PTO program. That is rich by many comparisons. If you look at the hospital industry, definitely if you step outside of the hospital industry, but in the hospital industry, it is still considered rich. In our specific marketplace, it's balanced with one of our other, with one of our major competitors, and it's, it is better than the other major competitor.
So if we look at your basic employee, and I know that this is too simplified, but it'll give everybody an idea of the numbers that we have to look at, is if we look at employee and benefits, for each employee and their benefits, how much do you think, you know what I'm saying? How much, what's the hourly rate?
Yes, so if you look at our benefits package and you tie it to a percent of base pay, it is approximately 30%, and it rounds up to, you know, a little over 37% when you look at FICA and what's considered the fringe benefits. So employees are making...
And is that market?
Is that market.
Okay, so if our employees are trying to figure out, you know, if I work here versus at another hospital, is there a salary market and is there benefit package markets now?
So if you look across the organization and based on the pay, you know, there's certain jobs within our organization that are at market, some are slightly below market, and others may be slightly above market. But if you look at the benefits plus the compensation that our employees are receiving, and Jose will be talking about this a little bit later as it pertains to compensation, we are competitively paying our employees from a compensation and benefits perspective. And some of that may be slightly above, slightly over, or at market, you know, based on the profession that you're in.
All right, I'm done. Thank you.
Greg, could you, though, real quick, tell them what it means when you say the pension was frozen? Because I don't, I mean, some people think that that means it was taken away, but if somebody was here 30 years, it's frozen, they're going to get that payment.
What does it mean when you freeze a pension? All of the benefit accrued up to that date. And let me just use myself for an example. I've been at Erlanger for 25 years. It'll be 26 on May the 18th, by the way. Let me just make that amount up this time. But I'll use myself for example. So I had 25 years in our traditional pension plan. I still have 25 years of service in the traditional pension plan. I still have the benefit associated with those 25 years of service. So as I separate from Erlanger, as I retire from Erlanger, I will receive a benefit under that plan that's equivalent to my 25 years of service. That will take my 25 years of service into consideration. So all of the accrued benefits that the thousands of employees have accrued still remains in the plan. We have a trust fund, the trust fund is invested, and our employees, the benefactors of the pension plan will be paid out upon retirement. So those benefits have not been reduced. When you freeze a plan, it's just a manner of no longer recognizing additional service with the organization. So my 25 years will remain 25 years, even if I serve, even if I have 30 or 31 or 32 years when I separate from Erlanger. So we have frozen the benefit at 25 years in the example that I'm using. So there's no loss of accrued benefit. And again, I would mention, traditional pension plans, those of you in the room potentially have had parents that participated in them, corporations, the healthcare industry included, have been moving away from those plans for years and years and years. So we, I would say, from an associate, just very fortunate to have been able to have the plan through 2014.
And can I add one thing to that? Is that the benefit plan, using Greg as the example, he would, with the 25 years, he would give that value of that plan. Let's say that Greg retired after having 35 years of service. 25 years from the old pension plan, based on the value, 10 years of the new plan. So it's not like you're, so really, Greg, in essence, has two pension plans now, one for the first 25 years, and then the new plan for the other 10. So just because we froze it for those retirees, and I'm in that bucket as well, that doesn't necessarily mean that my, the plan is done. It's that from that point on, I'm under a new plan at that point.
The new plan being the 403B plan?
Yes, imagining that Greg mentioned earlier.
Is the old plan funded?
It is not fully funded, no, but we have an actuarial study that has the funding ability to get it funded based on the retiree, expected retirement date of every employee in that plan.
And I'd also mention, the freezing of the plan last year did not impact many of our employees, because those employees hired on or after July 1 of 2009 were not a participant in the traditional pension plan. They were a participant in the 403B concept.
Can I just, to boil it down simply, for people who are already retired, not people who are employees that had their plan frozen, what happened to those individuals? Did benefits get taken away? Did money get taken away? Like, what happened?
So the individuals that have already separated in a retirement capacity, regardless, and they are a benefactor of the plan, no benefit reductions were experienced by them.
All right, at least anybody think it was a plan. I just sent my questions ahead of time so that they know how to answer us appropriately, so.
Full disclosure.
Full disclosure. Yeah.
And Henry, to answer your question about it being fully funded, and we just recently had an update from the people that manage that trust fund, with the plan no longer accepting new people, there's an appropriate way to wind one of those things down, and it sort of drags out for 20 years, I think they had it estimated as. And it's, there is, from a board level, I want you to know as a fellow, but there is a plan that we can share with the board to fund it fully, and I felt comfortable that it's being done appropriately, even though it's not fully funded today.
At this point in time, what kind of a liability are they estimating?
Well, right now, we're approximately in the 60% range of funding.
There's a lot of different factors that go in to try to figure that out.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's why, and that's why we always...
It changes daily.
Yeah.
And it changes daily because it's invested in the market.
And keep in mind, just for the board, this is not management's calculation, because it does have all those significant market factors. We bring in a third-party objective view, and they do the actuarial study. So this is not management's numbers. This is a third-party actuarial firm that does the calculations for us.
And more than likely every, I'm sorry, more than likely everyone is aware of this, I'll just comment, the pension fund, the funding, you know, the multi-millions of dollars that are invested on the, for, on behalf of our employees and our retirees, is placed in a trust, and management, this question comes up among employees, can management tap in and use those dollars? And the answer is no, other than far the benefit of the retirees. So it is placed in a trust and not to be used by management.
I would say, I remember that when the decision was made on the PTO, that was when, correct me if I'm wrong, we were getting ready to trip our bond covenants. And we could have either laid off folks, and their decision was made to defer the PTO for the nine weeks, because we knew, the board had confidence at that time that Erlanger was in the middle of it, that we were going to turn this place around, and that those people that could have been laid off were going to be needed to care for our patients. And so I remember that discussion of, let's do the PTO rather than doing the other approach that a lot of hospitals were taking of laying folks off.
And there was a large hospital in Nashville that actually did vote, and actually ahead of us, they laid off right before Christmas, 1,500 people, plus the PTO was suspended across the board about nine months.
Talking about Vanderbilt? Are we not supposed to say it out loud? I'm sorry. Yeah, Vanderbilt did that.
Competitor X, yeah.
Any other questions of Greg about the 2% raise? Again, we're not voting on anything tonight, but I'm just reconsidering it. Any?
Well, I have one, I said I was going to stop. Kevin showed us at one of our retreats, and I don't know if we've done it here, about what's going to happen to hospital income over the next few years. And so, you know, that's also information that the hospital is looking at as they, very, very tiny steps to committing us to long-term payout. So when you give an employee a raise, that's a long-term commitment. And so that might be very helpful going forward for the general public to understand what's going to happen to all hospitals with...
That number was a national number. It included physician payments and hospital payments. And basically, what it was telling us is, as part of the ACA, approximately $92 billion is going to be cut from physicians and hospitals through 2022.
Okay, and so we have to plan for that.
You have to understand your payments in the future, and standing still is not going to get you there. You're going to have to be challenged about the status quo to make it more cost-effective to provide better care.
Do you think you can do that presentation for them, to educate everyone?
I would love to.
And one of the other things that I've requested too, and I think would be so beneficial if we can work it out for the employees, is to broadcast this meeting on the intra-web so that even if you can't attend, the employees at least understand what's going on and why decisions are made and what information is given out, because a lot of the educational stuff that we discuss here is important to the future of the hospital.
And we're making baby steps. We're having it videotaped tonight, so eventually, Nita, you're going to get your way eventually.
Thank you, I always do.
Any other questions, Mr. Gentry? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Miss Stanley?
Sure.
A little handout.
So Donnie, can you just hang on for a moment before we pass all of that out? When people get a huge stack of data, they start flipping through it. Hi, everyone, I'm Jennifer Stanley. I'm the chairwoman of the Management Board Evaluation Committee, and our committee handles some, not all, compensation topics that are being discussed here tonight. But to aid in our discussion this evening, I asked representatives from Sullivan and Cotter, Sullivan Cotter and Associates. They are a healthcare compensation firm nationally. They deal in healthcare compensation, and they've been advising the committee and the board for several years in terms of bringing us objective data that helps us make some of the decisions that we've made. But before I introduce them and ask them to come share some of that information, I do want to remind my fellow board members of what our responsibilities are regarding compensation at Erlanger, because I think sometimes we get a little mixed up between what board's doing, what management's doing, what we have to do, what we don't have to do. So first, we're required by the board bylaws to do three things and three things only. Number one, evaluate the CEO annually. Number two, set the CEO's compensation annually. And number three, and this isn't just related to compensation, we have to vote on any expenditure in excess of half a million dollars. So what triggers the requirement for us to vote on the payout of any payment for performance incentive plan is not because we're required to pay an incentive plan, but because we're required to vote on a payout that's in excess of $500,000. So the reason we do that is for that bylaw requirement. It's not for any kind of compensation or incentive-specific requirement. I will say, though, we do provide management input and feedback on their ideas surrounding the incentive plan, because that just seems like it's a smart thing for the board to do, even though we're technically not required to do so. And second, there exists a framework for making decisions on compensation here at Erlanger that actually comes from a 2007 board resolution, which I think, Donnie, does that predate you as well?
It predates me.
Predates you, it predates, it predates me. But just so you're all aware, Erlanger had kind of maybe a patchy history over the years of how compensation and incentive decisions were made. So in 2007, the board said, let's be clear about a compensation philosophy here at Erlanger and how we would, you know, think about making decisions. So they actually passed a resolution that you all can look up, and we've got copies of somewhere back in the office, that addresses that. And what it does is it lays out some just general principles of thinking for both executive compensation as well as employee compensation. So since 2007, you know, even before I was on chairing this particular committee, that committee, the committee used that information as input to decision-making processes. So seven, almost eight years now, that's been in place. Third, to assist in executing those responsibilities, we do actually three specific things each year. First, we engage experts in healthcare compensation so that we have objective data. And this is really important, and Nita, just reflecting on some of your questions about, like, where are we with pay? It's really important that we can tell people, you know, here's the information we're using to make these decisions. And so we bring in external experts, we don't do it ourselves, to collect that information. But they don't just give us information, they actually share with us, what are other hospitals doing? What do we see in the marketplace? What do we see going on with hospitals that look like Erlanger with respect to compensation? They actually review our processes. And so, you know, I ask them, is there anything we're doing that you would tell us we should do differently? And tell me why, and, you know, what else we might benefit from, in terms of their knowledge of seeing hundreds of hospitals. So they do that for us. They also run analysis on CEO compensation and on the incentive plan. So the board members who aren't part of our committee, our committee doesn't run that analysis. It's done externally and then provided back to us, so that's how it gets vetted. And then also, they help in terms of, and also working with management, on the calculations of incentive pay. So at the end of the year, looking at different ways that targets were met or they weren't met, what exactly would be the amount that gets paid out by each individual role. So they run that analysis. We don't run that analysis. The second thing we do is we do engage with Erlanger management each year as a board to suggest the direction of any performance targets that might get set and then attached back to incentive pay. So not required by the bylaws, but we actually do it because part of our governance role is to establish a strategic direction. And this is where strategy begins to mesh with compensation. But we give them that feedback quite a bit, I'm sure Greg would say, especially coming from me. The third thing that we do, and this is just regarding the CEO evaluation, and maybe is helpful for some of our visitors to know here tonight, we've gone through a pretty rigorous process in the last 18 months or so to really redo the way that the CEO position is evaluated at Erlanger. It's probably the most robust process. Certainly, that, since I've been on the board, I can remember getting on the board and it's kind of like, you know, rate on these five dimensions, and I would read the dimensions and go, I'm not even sure I know what this means. So we went through an effort together with Sullivan Cotter and Associates to lay out a very clear list of criteria of all of the different behaviors that we expected to see of a CEO by different types of categories. And for the first time, and I don't know, you know, why it's the first time this year, but I'm glad we did it, we actually went out to executive and management leadership who interfaced with the CEO, and to physician leadership, and we said, give us your feedback directly and anonymously, so that the board would have that kind of input going into that decision-making. So as we go through that annual CEO evaluation process, we look at the audited financials, we take in information from the people the CEO manages, the CEO gives us information on how he believes his performance was for the year, we review operational and quality metrics, we review metrics against the strategic plan, and that's all the things we do to go into that evaluation. None of that is required by the bylaws. All of it has been established by the committee and then therefore by the board. So I wanted you all to have that background because it'll inform a lot of why you see the data that you see. So with that, I would like to welcome Jose Paguaga. He's a managing principal at Sullivan Cotter and Associates, and James Ferguson, who's a senior consultant, to share us, to share with all of us some of the details behind the compensation plan.
Okay. Thanks. Good evening, everyone. I think we're going to be here a long time. I'm going to, in my presentation, share with you what has in effect been months of work and hours and hours of meeting time and deliberation. And I'm going to do it at a very comprehensive and detailed level, sharing with the board again, all the data, all the information, and all the advice that led to the conclusions that culminated in the decisions in December. Okay? I invite you to stop me to ask questions. You know, it's important to understand, this is comprehensive, it's complicated, there are a lot of numbers. I will try to do this factually. If I offer an opinion, I will try to indicate that this is my opinion as opposed to a fact. So the conversation tonight, I'm going to spend just a second on an overview of the firm. I want to set the foundation on some common compensation terms that people in our craft use, and we assume that everybody understands what they are. We've come to realize that people interpret certain terms differently, so I want to just level-set on that. I do want to get into some of the details around Erlanger's compensation philosophy, because it is the foundation and the framework around which compensation was not only analyzed, but which, around which compensation was set. We'll go back and revisit the actions that the board took, and then we will go specifically around the three, the three major actions. One, which was the 2014 management incentive plan. So we will go back to the goal... So we will go back to the goals and the targets and how, the details behind that, but we'll go through the administration of how we got to the 1.7 million. We'll deal with the CEO's compensation, we'll go back to what I advised the board prior to Mr. Spiegel in late '12, '13, when I advised around the types of arrangements that would be necessary to hire someone of that caliber. I will then show you some compensation comparisons of how the actions and the compensation values, how that compares against the marketplace, and then we'll cover the 2015 management incentive plan. So again, very comprehensive agenda for us. Just by overview of the firm, our firm is established in 1992. We are the largest firm that advises the healthcare industry on matters of executive compensation. We are independent, we're fee-based, we're owned by our managing principals, we operate out of eleven offices, we have 500 clients, okay? We conduct 400 annual compensation consultations in this industry every year. And just in terms of my own background, I've been in this business for 28 years, I've been a career compensation consultant to this industry. In 28 years, I've advised big and small, complicated, private, public, academic, and community-based. I've been working with Erlanger since 2010, so I wanna be clear about what my relationship has been. I am direct, I am engaged by, and I am directed by, the board, okay? I do not work for management, I have never worked for management, and I do nothing other than advise the board on matters of executive compensation. Having said that, I'm aware of, obviously, compensation matters that may relate to physicians that are employed, as well as the staff, but I don't advise on that, I don't analyze. And so if I share some perspective on that, which I will, it'll be based on just my own experience and my experience of my colleagues, and a knowledge base that's been built up over a career of doing this. So let's just deal with some basic terms, because I'm gonna use these throughout. So when I refer to industry, I'm referring to the healthcare industry principally hospitals and health systems in the U.S. I'm not referring to health plans, I'm not referring to physician groups, I'm referring to organizations that are like Erlanger. When I refer to general industry, I'm referring to every other type of business other than healthcare organizations, so the other businesses that you'd be familiar with in this community. When I refer to the peer group or the market, I'm referring to 50, specifically 50 other health systems that have been vetted by this board and deemed to be reasonable and suitable as the basis of compensation comparisons, okay? And the last is, I wanna draw a distinction between what is a bonus and what is incentive compensation. These terms for most people interchangeably, are used interchangeably by laypeople, okay? The media in particular will characterize what is incentive compensation as a bonus plan. They couldn't be any more different, okay? And so just to establish the foundation, a bonus is an additional compensation element or additional pay that's not part of the formal program, that is not expected by the employee, and that's not really predicated on anything. And so when you have a bonus plan, if you wanna call it that, that is usually circumstantial, and is that the decision, circumstantial and situational, and is that the decision that things may have been better than what had been expected, and then there's some certain amount that has been provided. An incentive compensation arrangement is part and parcel of the compensation plan, okay? And can only be earned if certain pre-established goals or conditions are met. So it's part of the plan, it is compensation that is at risk, okay? It is not salary, salary for the most part, if you are employed, is guaranteed, okay? This is not guaranteed compensation. So let's start with a real basic foundation. Every organization has to, whether they explicitly do this or not, will answer, will answer three questions. And the first question is, how do you, on what basis do you compare or set compensation regardless of the group, okay? Compensation is always set in relation to something, it doesn't materialize out of thin air, it's not divined out of the minds of people, it is based on something in particular. And so in this industry, in the healthcare industry, two things are absolutely clear. One, health systems from one place to the next do it very similarly. And then two, depending on the group of employee, they do it very differently within that group. So if you look at the typical healthcare industry in terms of its executives, when it defines a market, it overwhelmingly says, we're going to compare against other health systems across the nation, okay, exclusively based on healthcare, okay? So it is not typical to compare healthcare executives against general industry executives or local executives. It is a national marketplace based on the healthcare industry. At the middle management level, you begin to see a blend, okay? So now you begin to see, still a focus on national, but now the market becomes more regional, and by regional I mean broad geographic regions like the southeast. When you get to the staff level, it's almost the opposite. The market tends to be much more localized, and it's local to the type of job that we're talking about. So nurses and clinicians are compared against more localized jobs or similar, and if you're in administrative position, it'll be local, but it will also be based on the general industry. Much less focus around national for staff employees. That's question number one, is who do you compare against, what types and what geographies? Question number two is, how do you put the pay packages together, okay? So what are the components of those pay packages? Again, this industry is very clear in how it does this. So for executives, about half the package is based salary, okay? A quarter of the package is incentive, based on the description that I just provided, and then the other is a combination of core benefits and what are referred to as executive-only benefits, which are typically limited to things like deferred compensation, okay? If this is 50% of pay, this might be 20% of pay, or, excuse me, 10% of pay. When you get to the middle management group, it's in essence the same composition, okay? Less pay at risk through incentives, more salary, the same core benefits, okay, and no supplemental or executive benefits, okay? When you look at the staff, the staff compensation is overwhelmingly on base salary, which again is fixed, core benefits, and for certain positions in clinical areas, there are what we refer to as pay premiums or additional compensation when the individual's inconvenienced by being asked to work late at night, or work a weekend, or work a holiday, okay? And so if this represents, if this represents the bulk of it, one thing to keep in mind here is if this is 37% of this at Erlanger, understand that just funding this for 3,000 to 4,000 people is a significant proposition, okay? If this is 37% of this, this is a huge number, okay? And so when you think about and begin to discuss things like the amount of increase here, you have to keep in mind that this is also part of the equation, and that this spills over into this, okay? So the point of all this is that it's never one piece by itself, it's never just salary, it's never just benefits, it's the totality of the employment package, and that varies by group. So let's talk about the prevalence of incentives, okay? In the industry today, 83%, okay? This includes the biggest systems that you can imagine to the smallest rural hospitals, okay? If you looked at organizations that were more like Erlanger, this number comes up in excess of 90, okay? At middle management, this is held at about 57, 60% prevalent, okay? For the staff level, it's about 23%, okay, and it's been here for a while, and it's not changing. So the question that you ought to be thinking about is, why is this this and not that, right? If this is the right strategy, why not here? And it goes back to what I was saying earlier. Organizations are first focusing about funding this, okay? They're protecting salaries, and they're protecting core benefits, okay? So to the extent that the dollars are available, the dollars are going into the guaranteed components of the package, they're not going into this, okay? So there's an economic reason behind that. The second reason this is this is there is concern, and I don't think it's, and I think it's a legitimate concern, among managers and boards, that if you take a component that is at variable and is at risk, okay, and you begin to pay that out, that people will adjust their standard of living to a number, okay, that could be unsustainable. So if you start delivering another 3, 5, 7, 10% to the workforce, and something that you as a manager know is variable, but if over the years that's embedded, and people are now adjusting their standard of living to that, imagine the repercussions to the individual, their family, and the institution if the bottom falls out of that number. The other question, so part one is, who do you compare against? Part two, or question number two, is how do you structure? And part three is, where do you generally target salaries, okay? In this industry, overwhelming amount for executives, for middle managers, and for staff, is you wanna pay at the middle of the market, the median, the 50th percentile, okay? So against any comparisons, you wanna be about the middle, okay? A handful of organizations are gonna be more aggressive, and they're gonna target above median, some others are either gonna not have a specific target, or they're gonna target some other place, okay? This is very consistent regardless of group, okay? And this is precisely, by the way, this is the Erlanger executive compensation philosophy, and this is how Erlanger attempts to manage employee pay. So while the markets are different and the values are the same, and I'm not trying to suggest that the value of this is equal to the value of that, because they're not, what I am suggesting is that the intent and the philosophy across these groups is entirely the same. That's salaries. Total compensation, which is now salaries plus incentives, again, most organizations are targeting the median, some are above median, middle management, same kind of picture, okay? Erlanger doesn't target a specific level. What Erlanger says is, we're gonna follow the market practices, and we're gonna create and put on the table an incentive compensation opportunity that's like everybody else, but then we're gonna do something, one other thing, is we're gonna let performance dictate how much, okay? And in years, if performance is not there, if the organization's struggling and there's no incentive plan, Erlanger says, I'm okay if I'm not here. We'll be below market if performance is not there. Conversely, if performance is there, we're okay being here, but we're not gonna say to the executives, we're not gonna say to the community, we're an above-market payer, because that forces you at a standard. The reasons that employees are not on here is because those plans are just not prevalent. So Erlanger's not gonna have a total compensation target for its workforce around this kind of issue, okay? So let me just stop there and see if there are any questions from the board.
Can I ask one that someone asked of me? I know the answer, but I wonder if others do. How often in the last 10, eight years or so, has Erlanger paid out incentives to management? Has it happened every year?
I'll look to him factually, my recollection is, I think, once.
Little bit more.
Yeah.
Yeah, so just for the board, four times since fiscal year '07. And so I wanted to just pause on that one, because given the interest around the incentive plan this year, it's the same philosophy that's been in place since fiscal year '07. Incentive payment, there was one done in fiscal year '07, there was one done in fiscal year 2009, which is actually more than the one that we are talking about for fiscal year 2014, it was 1.73 million, or 4 million. Fiscal year 2010, it was more, it was 1.83 million in incentive pay, and then nothing, 11, 12, 13. And I believe also in those years, executives and managers who were qualified for incentive didn't take above the board raises either, if that's correct.
Executives did not.
Yeah. So I just wanted to pause us on that, because I think this is an important thing for the board to discuss, right? There's a lot around this, you know, the payment when times are good, but there's no discussion, and at least that I've heard, around the fact that we don't pay when times aren't good, which effectively means managers make less year over year. And is that a philosophy we want to continue with? I mean, that's the essence of pay for performance, you pay when you perform, you don't pay when you don't. So I'm really curious to hear what people have to say.
Well, I need clarification, so the, when you say, like, there was 99 people, and I don't know every year how many are in incentive pay this time, when you say that those people then did not get a raise for like the last, or incentive or bonus, or whatever you wanna call it, for the last four years, or they did and the C-suite didn't, what do you mean when you say executives did?
Executives did not participate in any across-the-board raise provided.
Okay, but they...
During that time.
And so that means the middle managers too, that we're talking about, did not get any kind of incentive or pay raise either in that period?
They did. Directors and managers have been a participant in the across-the-board raises, but in the 11, 12, 13 fiscal years, directors, managers, and executives received no incentive pay.
Okay. Thank you. And one, I don't know if we're gonna talk about it, but one of the things that we all know is going to change, because the way that we are reimbursed by the government is changing, is when we set guidelines for what incentive pay will be, it's gonna start focusing much, much more on quality delivered as opposed to financial performance, so that's, and depending on how well we do, nobody may get one. You know, that's a major change in the way that we operate the hospital, is to focus and get paid on quality. I mean, the whole world is driving that.
And I think when we look at our 15 plan, we've switched the weighting to a heavier quality weight to reflect the fact that it's gonna become financially, and not only for patient care, but financially important for the hospital.
And Jose will share a lot of those details on the 15 plan, but I did wanna just pause us here, because before we jump into all the data, I think it's important to be sure that, you know, we actually believe in the philosophy we've set out, which is a pay-for-performance philosophy. Because if we do believe in that, we will be having this conversation, every single year Erlanger succeeds, we will be having a conversation around paying out incentives.
Can you explain what you mean by quality?
There are gonna be, oh, where's Woods? There are definite measures about how we're performing with, you know, heart attacks, with ventilator-dependent pneumonia's, catheter-related infections, the H caps are, did the nurses and the doctors explain things to you, was your room clean, I mean, there's somebody that...
I can give an example. Readmission rates, in other words, if a patient is discharged from Erlanger and comes back within 30 days with a similar diagnosis, then you're penalized going forward with that financial payment. So those are the quality indicators that CMS has adopted, and what we're seeing, as Dr. Schumaker said, not only is CMS adopting these, but now your commercial insurer payers are moving in that direction as well. So it is important that not only are we financially, doing things financially effectively, but also doing it in a quality manner.
How do infections fit into that?
Actually, there's separate quality indicators for that as well.
Specifically for infections. Lapsies and the catheter-related infections are part of both goals, and they're set in the metrics.
Because you're supposed to be re-looking at that on a continuous basis, does the person still need to be on the ventilator, does the person still need the catheter? And some of those are driven by the governments picking out, and actually, the state of Tennessee is starting a bundle of, you know, like hip replacement, for instance, they're gonna say, this is how much money we're gonna pay you for the hip replacement, and, you know, therefore we expect a good outcome. And that's, the readmission is about outcome too, you know, the patient can go home but not take their medicine, not live in a good environment, smoke, whatever, comes back in with a com- smoke, whatever, comes back in with a complication of a heart attack, and that you had no control over in that 30 days, that you're still going to be deemed for, which makes the hospital reach out to care coordinators and the people to follow up and to make sure they got their medicine. And so all that builds into the quality of healthcare we deliver as a system, not just in the hospital.
And keep in mind too, that these numbers are not absolute numbers. In other words, every year, you're measured against everyone else. So even though you're improving, if you're not improving as fast as everyone else is, you still could get deemed because you've not improved fast as everybody else. So it's not an absolute number that you have to...
We set our goals, so obviously, we didn't make all our goals, and, you know, hopefully that's, we set our goals to top quartile performance, and these are really set as stretch goals, and we can actually measure our performance. But exactly what Britt said is, as we're improving, so is the rest of the world. So we just have to improve faster.
Jennifer has raised the right question in terms of asking you whether you embrace pay-for-performance. And I think you've got to think about what the alternative is, and I'll go back to this slide. So if, if you don't go down that path, you got, you have to replace the value of this in some way, okay? This is the only portion of this entire piece that has any risk associated with it. Benefits don't have risk. And so your choice is you, you ignore this and you say, "I'm not going to replace it." Then you've got to say, "Well, how do, how do you compete?" Okay? You want to fill it up with salary? It's a fixed cost. You make this basket bigger, this grows at a substantial rate because so many of these benefits are predicated on salary.
You know, Jose, I've been thinking about this very thing, like Jennifer said. If you're going to go through this, you know, if this is something we, we go through every year, then is it better just to go to a fixed salary and adjust? Because if we stay with our philosophy that we want to pay at the 50th percentile or thereabouts, then if you take the incentive plan out, you have to increase the base pay. And then you're still paying out the same dollars, but you're not getting the incentive for performance. And then our hospital dies.
You go right back to where you were.
Right.
You, you know what that alter, you don't have to pummel that law. You, you lived that.
Right. And you don't earn enough to reinvest in the system assets. And so, while it's an easy answer, it's, it's a non-event, I don't think that, in my opinion, it is a healthy choice for Erlanger.
Well, in my mind, it's very similar to the defined benefit pension plan. If, we're stuck with it. If we fix salaries and bump up, and we just go with a fixed pay, it's fixed, we're stuck with it. There's, there's no room for error. There's no room for a hiccup, no room for a year that misses the mark for a little bit. I think that's a nonstarter.
You know, and, and you got, it's, and this is where the whole issue around, goes back to the staff play. As this grows, when you have a pension, and we're in a low-interest rate environment, and you start applying discount factors, this gets unbelievably expensive, okay? And so if I were an employee advocate, I wouldn't so much be focused here. I'd want to make sure I was preserving this, okay? Because this is where your costs are. So we could talk about 2% increases, a million bucks. I mean, that, we're talking about frankly, on the margin. It's here. So you really have to think about, particularly, and by the way, this is absorbable. This is 20 people. This is another 75, 80 people. This is absorbable here, okay? But, but you're still sending the message of, there's, there's no risk here. Now, what comes with that, unfortunately, as a public institution, is this. And there's no insulation from that.
The mid-management, these are salary people, correct?
Yes, they are.
Okay. How many hours a week do you think salary people? I mean, I know it varies on what your job is, right?
More than 40, most places.
How many here?
Anybody know?
I, I honestly want to know that. I want to know how many hours, middle management.
I ask the question, actually. I mean, I would presume that base pay is 40 hours a week, right? That's what most people work, 40 hours a week. But the mid-management people here do not work 40 hours a week.
What do they work?
60-some weeks, 70-some weeks. So I, I guess that's kind of the crux of the issue to me is, you know, if you're going to keep people that are going to actually put into the system, they're going to stay here, instead of going down the road to hospitals that do yearly have their incentive plan, and you're going to expect them to work over to drive our quality measures up, you have to reward them if you want to keep that base of people.
Plus, they're responsible for their unit 24 hours, seven days a week. So if someone calls them sick, they may call them at home. They're probably going to soccer practice and church and getting beat and called, and they're responsible for making decisions in their unit 24 hours, seven days a week. So although Dr. Appleton is correct, they're, they're probably here 60, 70 hours, but the responsibility doesn't stop. And we don't have structures that we have assistant directors and assistant assistant directors, and, you know, it's a very lean management team.
And I guess I have one more question that you, maybe you're going to address. I don't want to steal your thunder, but in our marketplace, everyone's incentive also the same way we are?
So if the marketplace, you're defining the 50 organizations?
No, I'm talking about Chattanooga.
Don't know.
Anybody know?
The other...
Memorial.
Yes.
Memorial has a similar plan to what we do. Park Ridge is for-profit, so they have three buckets that they come in, incentive compensation and stock.
Do we ever get the numbers of what their CEOs, et cetera, management team get bonus?
I don't have Memorial and Park Ridge. I have 990s for others. So this is, for, for organizations like not-for-profits that are 501(c)(3), they file a Form 990, and with that Form 990 comes the breakdown in executive pay, and it splits it out, compensation. So give me just one second. I anticipated that someone would ask this question, and Nita did not tell me she was going to ask this question.
I'm sorry.
But I have a sheet of questions. Because Nita, you know I love, you know I love my data. So just as an example, so let's take a couple of other essential access hospitals in Tennessee. UT Medical Center Knoxville, 2012 CEO, this is just CEO, just to give you a, a kind of a sense. They do have incentive, base salary of $800,000, incentive of $275,000, so making over $1,000,000 two fiscal years ago.
And a lower net revenue.
Okay, but the other question is, how big are they?
So, sorry, yeah, that's a lower net res, so UT Medical, well, that year, hang on, program service revenue was $626 million, so roughly kind of similar. But yes, incentive plan, and actually, CEO paid more two years ago. Let's take another, you know, another example, Med in Memphis, they have an incentive plan as well. A couple of other hospitals that people may know about, like Labaner, not essential, they're not a safety net hospital, but it's 501(c)(3), so a not-for-profit, similar, CEO paid over $1,000,000 when you look at base salary plus incentive. So I went and looked at Tennessee hospitals anticipating this question, and of the five that I was able to quickly pull, all four, all five of them had incentive pay. Only one of them compared to some of the, the data that Jose will show us about Erlanger was, was less than Erlanger. The other four were more at the CEO level.
And where, where are we in the size of hospitals?
I'll let, I'll let Jose tackle that with the peer group because he's got the data.
Yeah, so, I mean, one of the reasons that we don't look at this is because size is the best predictor, not so much destruction, but the value of executive compensation. So organizations like Methodist, Labaner, and Memphis Baptist would never make your peer group because there's so much, they're substantially larger than your group. There are some, and I'll show them to you, places like West Tennessee and in, I believe it's Jackson, Mountain States, just up the road. Those are going to be organizations that are going to be part of, formerly part of your peer group.
Okay, so comparing apples to apples?
Yeah, right.
But people always ask, like, community or Tennessee, right? So...
Thank you.
So, I mean, keep in mind that, that this is an important issue because you can look at, you know, there's liars and then there's statistics, right? As people say, you can, you can make any number appear to be what it is. The way that you protect yourself from that is you, is you direct management and your compensation consultant as to, what is your philosophy and who are the kinds of organizations that we're interested in looking at? And so what has been developed here, and I'll submit to you, and this is my opinion, is that this competitive market, the way that the board has discussed this, is very conservative. There's a few organizations, they range from half Erlanger's size to twice Erlanger's size, okay? Now, let me tell you what's not in it. There's no for-profits, there's no private elite academic medical centers, okay? There are no governmental organizations, okay? And there are no organizations that are, that are based in the markets in the U.S. that we know are aggressive payers. There's no, there's no representation from California, there's no representation from New York, there's nothing from, in the, in the D.C. corridor, okay? So having said that, and I'll show you the list in, in, in a second, just want to share with you what the targets are. So base salary, you're going to target the 50. That doesn't mean that you're going to pay every individual at the middle, but that's your target. If you're going to be around on either side of that, then there has to be a reasoned explanation for why you may want to pay somebody on, on one end or the other. The incentive levels, again, are going to be consistent with the peer group, as are the benefits. There's no specific compensation target, it will depend on results, but in no case, unless there's some extraordinary events, unique circumstances, which the board must approve, you cannot exceed the 90th percentile. And with the 90th percent, yeah.
And Jennifer, isn't that in the '07 resolution, the 90%? Because I, I was really surprised to see that when I went back and read it.
Yeah. So this is both a, a...
It refers to a 90th percentile level.
Yeah. So keep in mind...
It's a cap.
Keep in mind that this, that the 90th percentile, you know, in a group of 50, you've got another five individuals that are making, that are real, real souls, that would be making beyond this particular point, okay? Our target is, our target's here, okay? But that's a guardrail.
Actually, just to pause on that too, so folks know, target does not mean always equal. Target means kind of, that's the reasonable place that we start. It doesn't necessarily mean down to the last cent, that it's an equal number.
So here's the list. I want to be transparent, so here's, here's the organization where they're located, and the net revenue, which is for, for people in our trade, the way that we size an organization. It's the one common metric. So it deals with size, it doesn't deal with complexity. And so I just got to highlight a, a few of them just to demonstrate that, that we're talking about organizations, they're, they're not identical, but they're similar, okay? So, you know, Mississippi Baptist in a mid-sized community in Jackson, not-for-profit couple hospital system. West Tennessee, governmental in, in Jackson. Caramont Health in a, in a small community in Gastonia outside of Charlotte is in the mix. Georgia Regents in Augusta, academically associated. Maricopa here is also governmental, but that's in Phoenix. Infirmary, Mobile, a very similar system to Erlanger. Phoebe Putney, and a, a big player in a small rural area, the metro health system. It's Cleveland, it's a bigger, bigger community. Absolute safety net hospital located in downtown Cleveland. Grady, I'm sure you're all familiar with. McLeod is a small growing, you know, health system in Florence, South Carolina. Cape Fear, Fayetteville, North Carolina. And so I think with the exception, if you look through here, they're all mid-sized, small to mid-sized communities, some rural, some, some a little bit bigger. I mean, there's exceptions, there's clearly Cleveland and Atlanta. But the most part, what we're trying to do is trying to get to a large enough sample size so that the data's credible using a filter that, that intellectually seems like it's the right place, the right place to be.
Jose, what would happen, just out of curiosity, like, what would happen if we threw elite academic medical centers into the mix?
Like, depends how many you threw.
Yeah, so let's say we put 10 in, 10 we had 60. Would, would that throw the weight of this off a bit?
Yeah, because most of those are, first of all, going to be much larger than this.
Yeah.
And the pay disparity between private academics and public community base is pretty, is pretty significant.
Okay.
If you threw 20 of them, we're talking about completely a different strata of competent, of executive compensation.
Higher.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I just, I remember at one point, gosh, maybe this is several years ago, when we were having like, you know, a debate on strategy around the, you know, the, the academic part of, you know, Erlanger's partnership with UT Medical Center, and shouldn't we be benchmarking ourselves to those organizations that, you know, we consider ourselves to be a peer with in certain elements of, you know, the, the programs that we have? And at the time, the reason we kept them out was exactly for this, that like the pay was astronomical, they were private, they had different sources of funding than Erlanger had. And so, you know, I bring that out only to say that it's not that we don't think that we operate and can compete from a medical perspective, right? With those kinds of organizations, but from a compensation perspective, we'd be, I'm guessing we're talking about a very different world.
Completely different. I mean, you're looking at a, at a, all things equal, you know, you're looking $2 million, $3 million easily, all in for a CEO of that organization. But again, now, they, they are very complex. There's a whole academic overlay, there's an academic mission, they're more complex businesses, okay? Now, there's the argument that, you know, running, being a public CEO is, all things equal, more complex than running a comparably sized community-based system, okay? They don't have to deal with this. They don't have to deal with the imposition on, and the considerations, the margins generally are not as strong, okay? There's much less room for error. That doesn't always work its way into the compensation practices. Which, which brings up an interesting point. We can debate the merits of compensation, we can debate what's fair and what's just, okay? We will literally go round and round. What we can't debate is the market value that is expressed when you analyze this, and it's, in a statistically proper way with a representative sample. So, so the market is rational, the market's not always just. And I'll say that as a compensation consultant, I don't understand why the, the, the lady that teaches my kid math doesn't make more than what she makes, okay? And we could start there and we can, so these comparisons around these kinds of values, understand that as a board and as a compensation committee, you can't resolve it. Not that they're not worthy, it's just never going to get to an answer. Okay. Actions under the consideration, actions under new and substantial reconsideration. The board took four actions in December. It approved a, an award totaling $1.7 million for all eligible participants related to that resolution. There was a $200,000 set aside for an employee recognition event. The CEO, based on performance, was awarded a 10% base salary increase. The management incentive plan for fiscal year 15 was reviewed and approved, and a pay increase for eligible employees, which you heard about earlier today, of 2% was approved.
And, and just so, for people who not on the board, unbudgeted, when, you know, that's a horrifying statement for anybody in management, like, "Oh, my God, we paid money that we didn't plan on paying out, and where does that money come from?" So it's kind of like you have a car wreck and, you know, you've got to pay the deductible, that money's got to come from somewhere. And so when we say unbudgeted means we didn't plan it, we're going to have to make some adjustments somewhere else to continue to meet our budget. It's got to come out somewhere else.
You have to go. So let me take you through the 14 incentive plan as it was presented. There's been some conversation that the focus is really on two things, improvements in quality of care, that relates to both service as well as patient safety, and to improve the operating efficiency of the operating units. The operating units would be the individual hospitals and the corporation as a whole. We've talked about the need to have to do this to remain competitive in terms of the compensation offering. And then most importantly, to structure the plan in a manner that assures that it is self-funded. So that it is funded through real dollars, okay, that were put on the organization's financial statements to pay for this plan. In the plan, there were 99 employees that were eligible to participate, which included the CEO, the vice presidents, the directors and managers, right? And so based on market practice, and only based on market practice, were then these incentive levels established, okay? So for the CEO, keep in mind that there's always, if you don't perform, this number's always... always zero, okay? These relate to percentages of base salary that can be earned if performance is, if performance is met at the pre-established level. And so what happens is, each one of these is associated with a progressively higher or harder, more challenging level of performance, okay? And so, again, this is all based on market data, this was based on our advice, and it's based on, in particular, the practices of the peer group that I just mentioned. Now let me demonstrate sort of where the variations may be. At the CEO, for hitting their performance targets, he could earn 35%, okay? If you look at the peer group, okay, the CEOs of those same 50 organizations, and you take an average, that's 35%. At maximum, your CEO can earn 50% of salary, against a market of 52%. If you look at other executives, they fall a little short, okay, relative to these two standards. If you look at the middle managers, they're precisely on the standard. So again, there's a market basis, you know, for these numbers. So what happens, here's what you have to consider. What happens if you don't pay incentives? The level of competitiveness against these 50 organizations for the CEO is at 83% of the market, okay? So automatically, if you didn't have the plan, or if the plan didn't pay, your CEO is paid at a 17% discount to the market.
So would that be the case if we have the plan, but there's no performance?
That's right.
There's an automatic discount.
Right, right.
So I guess, you know, just for my colleagues, the way I almost think about that is, you know, we, from a return on investment standpoint as a public organization, and maybe this gets to the discussion around, like, what happens if we just went to a total fixed salary system? This is like the protection, in a sense, for the community or the public in a down year, when Erlanger doesn't perform. People can be assured that we're not overpaying. So this is just the flip side, to me, right, of the same coin, of saying, we'll pay more in years when the organization outperforms. So we would automatically be at a 17% discount back in 2013, '12, and '11, when incentives weren't paid.
Which you should absolutely accept, if the performance is not there.
Right. Totally. That's my point.
Because if you're a pay-for-performance organization, you say, we get it, we've created the alignment. It's a completely different matter if you say, we don't have a mechanism.
So let me make sure, the 124% would equate to the 62nd percentile?
Not necessarily.
If the CEO earned the total amount of bonus that he was, he would be at 124% of the 50th percentile.
Of the premium. So it's about 25% premium over the market. So here's your range. Here's your range. Your range is, if you don't perform, you're at a 17% discount. If you hit every goal, you're at about a 25% premium, okay? This, if this is done right, is almost impossible, okay? This is not impossible in the healthcare industry today. So your question is, can you tolerate this? Now, the only way you can tolerate it is if you don't have performance. Because how do you look your executive team or your management team in the eye and say, we value you, you're important to us, okay, but we're going to let, we're going to pay you anywhere from a 5% to 17% discount to the market? They going to stay? All right. So that's the structure. So how does this plan work? All right? First of all, we have to have real money, okay? So the plan, the first concept that I want to talk to you is about how the plan funds. Keep in mind, this, this plan required you to make real dollars on the bottom line. And the way that this plan was structured was, once you covered, once you were at a break even, and you covered the $200,000 on employee recognition event, every dollar above that amount, half went into this pool.
So you're talking about 2014?
Yes, sir. Okay? Half goes in the pool.
That's different for other years, but 2014?
That's correct. This is '14, I'm talking about the '14 plan, okay? So half of that goes into a pool, so you can imagine, you have this pool sitting over here, okay? Now, you're not simply going to distribute it, right? Because this is not a profit-sharing model, where you just, whatever you make in excess of what you, what you need, you're going to distribute. Then, all this pool then has to be earned, based on hitting a number of goals at the unit level, okay? And let me just share with you what, I'll come back to the, I'll come back to the goals. So here's what I would say. The first $200,000 of excess income goes to the pool, anything above that is split 50/50, okay? And so, the most that could ever, could have ever gone into this pool, based on the formula, was $2.5 million, okay? Which would have meant that Erlanger would have had to generate 5.2 to pay for the 2.5, okay? What you ended up doing was, so to fund at that target, you needed 1.7 in the pool, but you needed to get to 3.5 million to fund, okay? So any amount, who was the first creditor in this plan? Erlanger. Who's the second creditor in the plan? The employee recognition event, because the first $200,000 have to go to that. The third creditor in the plan are the individuals in the plan. But we're not done yet. Now, we funded the plan. Now, how do individuals earn, okay? So half of it was based on, so these are by unit, so this is actually the corporate employees, okay? So half of, half of, half of that pool is distributed based on the amount of net operating income that it would, that it would have been earned attributable to the corporate organization, The other, the other half, these are all quality-related goals, okay? So hand hygiene is an observation metric, based on the percentage of time that someone has observed washing their hands. Why is this important? Because I think the clinical people will tell you that this is a proxy or predictive indicator of infection rates in hospitals, okay? 10% of that then relates to HCAPs, okay, which is a series of indicators that relate to service excellence or the patient experience, okay? Caudy and Clabsy, okay, are, and I'm not a clinician here, are infection rate measures. This relates to catheter-associated urinary tract infection, this relates to bloodstream infections, okay? This is, these are metrics around doing harm to patients, okay? So these have to be improved. And then the final metric is early, early-term elective deliveries, okay? And you will see that generally the structure is the same, now, they're not identical, because in some of the institutions, there's either not the ability to measure it, you don't have the measurement infrastructure, okay, as was the case in Bledsoe. So Bledsoe, for an example, was 100% based on the hospital economics, but you could generally see that half is based on financial goals efficiency, and the other half is based on quality.
Sorry to stop for a second. Because I joined the board mid-year. When did we adopt this plan? When did, when did we, this is the plan. When did we do that last year?
So, this is a good question, because this is one of those things where it's not a requirement for the board to do anything about this plan, right? So technically, it's a management plan. So if it weren't for us as a board saying, we want to be involved in this plan, and I want you to show me this plan, and we want to say something about this plan, it effectively never has to be adopted, right? So what we did last year at fiscal year 14 is, I, as the chair of the committee, sat down with Greg, with Jose, with everyone, taking feedback in from the board, and I said, you tell me what you think you should do, and let me tell you what I think you should do. And we didn't really do, do much more than that, because it looked very similar to, like, the last five years. There really wasn't that much different. And I think, you know, I mentioned maybe back in December, I said something about how, like, we didn't even think at the time that the plan would pay out, because the time we were having that discussion was the time we were contemplating layoffs and breaking the bond covenants. So in the scheme of, like, does it even make sense to try to, you know, do more with the plan than had already been done? No. Now, flash forward to December. Regardless of what the bylaws require, and we may want to think as a board about changing the bylaws, I think we should formally vote to adopt, if we're going to have an incentive plan, what does that incentive plan look like? Which is why the fiscal year 15 one came up in front of the board. We don't have to do it, but I think, I personally think, we should do it. But from a management standpoint, since it's their responsibility to management, it's been communicated from day one of the fiscal year. Every manager knew this is what was going on, even if maybe all of us didn't exactly know.
Yeah. We hold monthly management meetings of all of the department heads. We go through, Britt goes into detail about our financials, some of the issues we're having. We also go through, Dr. Woods Blake goes through, not only these quality metrics, but all of the quality metrics, and how all the units are performing. And that was communicated, so every single manager knew, every single month, the financial performance and how they were doing, based on this scorecard, how they were doing. I can give you one really great, Dr. Jan Keys and myself, we did rounds, and one of the units, which unit was it that we were on?
Third floor.
Third floor. We went there, we got all the staff together, and we went through their cauti infection rate, and they didn't have a cauti infection rate?
For 16 months.
For 16 months. So we congratulated them and recognized them for their performance. So not only do our managers understand their targets and their quality, we also drill down to the unit level and the performance of each nurse-manager, and how they perform compared the rest of the hospital and national benchmarks.
Yeah, and actually, if we could pause on this, too, and Jose, I'd love your perspective on this, because we have these debates of, you know, appropriate level of board governance versus micromanagement, right? And if, you know, the board were, I would love to know what your perspective is on how involved the board could or should be, in terms of, like, the monthly communication to the 99 managers of what's going on with your pay versus these targets. Like, is there an appropriate role for the board, or is that better served by management?
I think that's better served by management. The role of board is much better served in making sure that this is working, and that this is right, so. And not so much the compensation, but to make sure that the goals that are there are reflective of the priorities as the board sees them, number one. Number two, that the targets are such, are set at a level that they're incentive-worthy, that management has to stretch to earn.
Okay.
Okay. So I'm going to be just fully transparent, these were all, these were all the goals, and I'll just be established that these were established long before the fiscal year was over, okay? Here are your baselines, and so let me just walk you through how, in essence, this works. Let's take, let's take hand hygiene as an example. The baseline going into '14 would have been a little bit below, just slightly below, 85% of the observations met their standard. And so, for there to be any compensation associated, they at least had to improve one basis point to 87. If they wanted to max out, they had to get to 93. So I won't go through all these, but you'll see that they're all progressive. Here's the baseline, let's take cauti. So the cauti rate was 5.4 infections per 1,000 days, okay? To get to the plan, they had to get to 4.39, and to get to the maximum, they had to get to 1.6, okay? So I won't go through all this, but this theme of starting at your baseline, improving at the, at the lowest level of compensation, and going from there, is consistent through all this. So this, this is corporate.
Hang on, hang on, I know you don't want to go through all them, but I don't want to move off this, because I didn't actually get an answer to the question I asked before, which is, do we, as a board, and I didn't hear from everybody, actually believe in pay-for-performance? Because this is where the rubber meets the road. This is the performance, right? And this is what determines the payout. So, you know, for me personally, every time I read, or hear, or see, or the word "bonus", it makes me crazy. And the reason it makes me crazy is because this is not a bonus. This is this board telling management, you only get paid if you do these things, and by the way, we're purposely setting, making it really darn hard for you to do it. But I want to know from everybody, because it will direct the management board and evaluation committee how we think, like, is this the kind of system you're happy with, or is there a different system?
Yes.
Thank you.
You've already heard my opinion.
I think we have to have it this way. I mean, if we want to improve and keep doing better, this is what brings that improvement.
So the spirit of transparency, here's the corporate group. Here's Baroness, which included North, same type of structure. Here's Children's, same type of structure. Here's East, same type of structure. And here's Bledsoe. This is the incentive plan. There's nothing outside of it that was considered, okay? This was the totality of the plan. Here are the results. Net operating income, you will see, by the way, this is very typical, okay? So you're going to see some hit at the highest levels, some missed entirely. If they're all hit at stretch, then you got to question whether the goals are worthy. If they're all missed, then you got to question whether they were too hard, or, you know, maybe there's an issue with management. And so, if you look at the corporate line, you see a different kind of pattern, or you said typical pattern, I should say. At the net operating income level, it was stretched, service excellence was not in the money. At threshold, hand hygiene, cauti, and Clabsy at threshold, so they were in the money at level one, and early-term deliveries were hit at the stretch. And so you see that this varies. Again, not surprising, this is indicative of a plan that has some fair goals associated with it.
One of the things that I've heard from folks is the supplemental, the payment pool, should it have been included in the computation? And give me your...
Unquestionably, it should be included. It is payment for services rendered, okay, from a governmental source, no different than Medicare or Medicaid. And I have a hard time understanding why that would even be a question, okay? It wasn't in the budget. The reason it wasn't in the budget is because they didn't think they were going to get it. And what legitimate CFO puts something in a budget that they don't think they have any shot at getting? It wasn't money from the heavens, that program was there. Your prior CEO didn't go get the money, your interim CEO didn't go get the money, okay? This gentleman and his team went and got that money. They didn't win the lottery, okay? This is, this is revenue for services rendered.
Let me ask Britt a question along those lines. If we did get money from the heavens, or we got a grant, or a donation...
We'd love to get money from heaven.
The accounting rules as they stand, would you be allowed to count them in any way that would get into the EROE calculation?
The grant is restricted, and then that can't be counted. What was the other?
Donations go to the foundation.
The money that we just raised from Wall Street would not be counted.
No, no, because that is restricted. Anything that's given to Erlanger in a restricted manner cannot be counted as such. And one other thing, too, which people, for some reason, has not been discussed, our indigent self-pay discharges actually were increased, we've seen an increase in fiscal '14, which is what we're discussing tonight, of nearly 14%. So our discharges in the indigent self-pay, which is what this money goes to pay for, we actually saw a 14% increase over prior year, and an only a 10% increase if we had budgeted.
Can I just bring, make that more specific? Because we can, we talk about uncompensated care like it's some kind of crazy accounting term. Folks, it is, but let me tell you what it is, because I went back and I said, you tell me the top 50 people in this community that this money paid for. Nine babies who were in the NICU, and it cost us $3.6 million to care for those early preterm babies.
That's cost.
That's cost. We were, do you think we were reimbursed the full cost of that? The answer is absolutely not. Erlanger picked up $1.5 million of that cost, and the rest was reimbursed. The top 10 people, people, these are people that came into this hospital that Erlanger cared for last year. The two of them were on the ventilators for over a week, one of them cost $1.357 million, and we got $759,000 cash back. So Erlanger subsidized that. Those are real people, there are real doctors, there are real nurses, real supplies, real drugs, real equipment, real overhead. This $19.5 million is not like some random amount of money that just fell into Erlanger's lapses, it's for caring for these babies, and for amputees. We reattached limbs. We actually, it looks like we gave someone a transplant. I mean, these are people. So every time we talk about this money, like, I'm sorry if I sound frustrated, but I almost burst into tears when I looked at this. but I almost burst into tears when I looked at this list and I looked at the babies on the list. That money is for people. It's not, it is for what Erlanger does to care for those people.
If you do a transplant for an uninsured person and you don't have any money for that, the hospital still has expenses.
Absolutely.
We have to pay for the kidney. And we have to, just because the patient doesn't have insurance, someone has to pay for that kidney, and it's, that's real cash that we pay.
Now, we have talked about this, and somebody's gonna have to help me with it again 'cause I'm not an accountant. I just spend money, I don't actually understand. I just make it and it, stuff shows up. So, when we have, when we take care of an uncompensated, we send that information about our uncompensated care to...
The state.
Okay, and then walk me through that.
Okay. The, there's what is called public expenditures, okay? And so Erlanger being a governmental public hospital, the eighty-six million dollars that we spent in uncompensated care cost, not charged, again, I don't know how people get confused.
Money, it's real money.
It's real money. And it is people, like Jennifer said, it is, it's very frustrating. But, that cost is sent to the state. The state uses that money to send up to the federal government for matching. And that, then, that money is brought back down to the state. In some states, that the state gives it back to the hospital that created that matching. In Tennessee, it goes to the general pool for ten care, and that then is distributed based on the ten care rules and regulations and rates.
So in some weird way Erlanger subsidizing ten care?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Totally, no, no weird way, we are directly subsidizing it.
But that's...
Well, it is weird, but...
Well, but keep in mind Erlanger, um, not Erlanger, but the state of Tennessee in the nineties did the waiver out of the traditional Medicaid program. And so, part of that waiver process is all these ways of funding, because even if you waive out of the traditional Medicaid, you have to prove that there is a funding mechanism for CMS to give you that waiver. Keep in mind, CMS is the one that approves the waiver to get out, to do something alternative to the traditional Medicaid program. So that's a way of funding those.
And then, so some of that, to offset that, some of the supplemental pool is kind of partial, giving you back to the actual cost of taking care of patients that the state made money off of.
CMS recognized this, and for hospitals that they did that and the hospitals that don't have that money passing through, CMS created a supplemental hospital payment pool to help, not fund it totally, but to help offset some of those uncompensated care that the hospitals provide.
Of the eighty-four million that we send up, after everything was said and done and everything good that happened this year happened, how much ended up coming back to Erlanger?
Well, the eighty-six million that we send up goes to the ten care program. So, you get the rates that we get paid for treating ten care patients, you get the essential access monies, as well as the disproportionate share monies that was sort of rolled into the essential access. But it's not just Erlanger. Every hospital in Tennessee that provides uncompensated care gets that. And one of the other things that people, for some reason, can't grasp is that the public hospital money is not state money. It is federal money that has been sitting in the pool. So, what we, the money is sent up and the federal money is what we get. So there is no state money involved in that pool.
So the state just manages the money, but it's not actually Tennessee taxpayer through the sales tax money.
It's federal tax.
But maybe, I mean, I actually, once again, I came with my papers here. And Steve or someone or Britt, tell me if I got this wrong, because I must have asked Britt ten times when I decided to take on this topic to explain to me how the money went. And I looked at the breakdown of Erlanger's uncompensated care costs back to two thousand and nine. And what it looks like to me is like there's kind of, until last year, so let's leave two thousand and fourteen out for just a minute, until two thousand and thirteen, there are really three things going on. Erlanger got disproportionate share funding to offset some of it. We got essential access hospital pool money to offset some of it. And we got graduate medical education or GME money. So there was like that pool of money. And in two thousand and thirteen, that was roughly twenty-three million dollars, all those together. Now, our, if I remember, in two thousand and thirteen, it was probably eighty million or so in uncompensated care as well. So, we tell the feds we spent that eighty million, we only got back twenty-three, and the state of Tennessee kept forty million.
To go into the ten care.
To go into the ten care, but can that money ever get used for things other than ten care? Like, could it end up getting used for like Rose or something like that?
Um, I have no, I've been told it was for the ten care program. So, I, I, I don't take that as...
No, 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 I'm just trying to figure, 'cause I'm looking at these numbers, I'm like, alright. So, we send up the eighty million to the feds, we Erlanger gets back twenty-three, twenty-two point nine. In two thousand and thirteen, the state of Tennessee gets forty million for the care that Erlanger gave. And then Erlanger absorbs, absorbs sixty-two point five million in like money that Erlanger had to come up with on its own.
That is correct.
Okay, so two thousand and fourteen, the thing that changed was we added in the supplemental pool money of the nineteen point five million that came back in through the federal government, and the state still kept thirty-one point seven million. Okay, so in my mind, folks, just so I'm transparent with my board members, this is exactly why that nineteen point five million should count. It's not Tennessee state money. Erlanger gave the care and incurred the costs to get it. Other hospitals all over America get it. For whatever reason, you know, the Med and Nashville General for the last five years were getting it, and for whatever reason, I don't even think it's worthwhile to debate it. Erlanger wasn't, but it's, it's attached to real value that Erlanger delivered. And the state still keeps money for ten care for the real value that Erlanger delivers.
And keep in mind that that public hospital pool...
Am I understanding, hang on, am I understanding this correctly?
You're right, you're right.
Okay.
Keep in mind that that public hospital pool, it's a fixed pool at the federal level of a hundred million, but what Erlanger gets every year is not fixed. It can vary based on the uncompensated care that we provide. So if we provide less uncompensated care compared to the other people in the pool, we will get less money.
Or...
Or if we provide more...
And they provide even more, we still could get.
So, it really is, and people need to understand, it's not a fixed payment.
And it's not a gift.
It's not a gift.
And it's not, and just to be, and it's not Hamilton County tax dollars, it's not Tennessee tax dollars, it's our federal tax dollars. So in a sense, we as federal taxpayers are seeing it come back. And when I sort of thought about that for a minute, I thought, wow. So the citizens of Hamilton County who pay federal tax dollars and support Erlanger for five years, we're getting none of that back until this year.
That's correct.
And that was just for one year, right?
Sorry?
That was just for one year.
Yeah.
Can all that change with the change in administration in Washington?
Uh, virtually anything can change, because keep in mind that the public hospital pool is part of the ten care waiver. So it is actually embedded in that waiver. The waiver is usually reviewed every three years by CMS, which is the federal part. So, that waiver can be changed by whoever is in administration at that point. And, so, yeah, so that's why it's not guaranteed. So we need to understand that, that this is not a guarantee, just like, but, but to be honest with you, none of the money, like dish money, disproportionate share money, essential access, none of that is really guaranteed. Because truly, as Congress reviews healthcare in general, and I think even our presenter said, it's one of, healthcare is one of the most complex industries. And as we go through the ACA implementation, remember the ACA is a stepped implementation. We are not even close to seeing the full impact of ACA. We're only in the very beginning of what we're seeing, of what's going through the ACA. So, to answer your question, yes, administration can change that as well as any other funding mechanism. Now, for public hospitals, you know, it's, you know, you have to wonder how much can impact a public hospital? But administration can change it.
Henry, what I would say is, the question is not only can it change, and that's even without an administrative change, you know, administration change, it's when will it change? Because the debt service that our government currently is facing, they are, they are gonna have to make changes and the healthcare industry is gonna be part of it because we're such a large aspect of TDP.
And that's why really, if you compare a public hospital, that's a safety net hospital, that is a trauma center, is a pediatric hospital in this region, that's, and it has the eighty-six million dollars uncompensated care. That's why these people in this room, and I'm pointing to our mental managers and our staff, they have to be better than, in my opinion, than those people that are not have that mission that's attached, because they, they have the same payments. I mean, Erlanger gets the exact same Medicare payment that these for-profits that we've talked about, as well as these private not-for-profits. But yet, we're saddled with them, and that's why our managers have to even be better than, in my opinion, these other places that don't have that mission associated with them, which we take, we take pride in them, to do that, but I think that sometimes gets lost.
Britt, what's the shortfall? If you take all the uncompensated care that's reported to the federal government, and that's not a one-to-one ratio, that they, that they say back to the state?
It's sixty cents. It's possibly, it varies, but it's between sixty-four, sixty-six on the dollar that they get back.
Yeah.
And that can change, 'cause, I mean, again, it's just...
That's called CPE, just Certified Public Expenditure.
You know, just one comment or question probably for Britt. One thing I hear is, oh, you at Erlanger, when you report your uncompensated care, you're reporting something that's not really quite real. But I believe you told me there's a formula that every hospital uses.
Yes, yes.
So it should, you should be able to compare Erlanger to Hospital X, Y, Z profit, not profit, whatever.
And that number is certified.
And it's the same formula for every hospital.
It's a state, actually a state definition, so it's not an Erlanger. We don't define it, and it's reported through, we have to file a joint annual report to the state every year. And every, all the hospitals can do that.
And it's the same formula for everybody.
Yes, that is correct.
Are we gonna order pizza?
How's that your cue to move on?
I'm gonna put a bow on the, on the twenty-fourteen incentive plan. So you run out the financials, you run out what I just shared with you on the quality and service goals, and then you account for the plan. So, on the financials, actual excess revenue of expenses was thirteen point three million dollars. The first two hundred thousand of this amount of money went to the employee recognition event. You generated enough money to pay out two point five million, okay? But because you didn't max out all those goals that I shared with you, your total pool of what you're paying out is one point seven million. So, management doesn't like this word, but this is the way we think. But the performance give back, so you gave back to the organization because you didn't max out the goals, was just under a million dollars. So the thirteen-three that you started with, Erlanger puts in the bank eleven point four. Now, I ask you this. If I came to you and said, if I delivered thirteen-three and I improved quality around some fundamental metrics, that's gonna cost you one-seven. But you don't have to pay the one-seven unless I do this. Would you take that deal? And if it takes more than, just a second to think about that, that I haven't done a very good job in my presentation, okay? This is what the board approved.
You know, just to kind of call a spade a spade, since I know that this has been part of the discussion and the debate and the consternation that some people have, is they would look at that thirteen point three million and say, well, Erlanger would have never gotten that if it weren't for the nineteen point five. And we've just discussed how the nineteen point five actually offsets real cost of real care for real people. But, you know, I actually thought about some more of this math one, 'cause Jose asked me this question too, he's like, would you take that deal? And I said, heck yes. And I thought, actually, the deal is bigger than this. Because I could also equally make the argument, right? That that thirteen point three million would not exist if there wasn't forty-seven new million, forty-seven million dollars of net new revenue that Erlanger brought in last year. That number wouldn't be that number if there weren't twenty-five, twenty-six million in operating costs that Erlanger cuts. So that's a swing of seventy-two-ish million dollars. Okay, that number wouldn't be that number if Erlanger hadn't have grown market share and brought more patients who tend to have maybe some of the surgical procedures that we know are so vital to the economics of this hospital, hadn't come back. And even though it doesn't count against the EROE, I think about the bonds that we were able to just go secure. And there is the net, I think, seventy-one million, right? So a seventy-two million swing in the operating income. Seventy-one million freed up to put into Children's, East, which one am I...
Str-.
Yeah, so goodness, of course, Orthopedics and Cardio, yes, 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 are operating rooms. And so I add those two together, and now I'm looking at a hundred and forty million plus of dollars that Erlanger managed to basically put back in to the system and the community, and I look at one point seven. I mean, I don't even know how to describe it.
I'll close this, I really will close this, back to where I started. Without that, you don't protect this. And we're a thousand people here.
Well, I will, I will...
Single biggest line item on the income statement, okay? So not only do you threaten the viability of Erlanger's institution, you increase the tax burden, okay? But you can't protect this.
And I'll remind my board members too, that in twelve, we lost sixteen million, and that's net bottom line, lost thirteen, we lost fourteen million. And it wasn't until fourteen, we finally started making money again. So, it, there has been some discussion, well, how did you turn it around so fast? You know, it was faster than I thought, but if we were sitting there for two years back to back with a thirty-one million dollar loss for the two years previous to fourteen, it's, you gotta put everything in perspective.
Yeah, so you paid out a hundred percent of target for the ninety-nine people, okay? The corporate group, which includes the vice president, the CEO, they didn't fare any better against their target than anybody else that performed at the same level. These are performance issues in these units. Now, I'm not suggesting the dollars are the same, 'cause they're not. But the same opportunity got paid out across the board. And through all the math, you paid out at target. Here's your salaries, here's the payout, okay? This is a hundred percent of all those targets, okay? That's number one. Let's go to number two, which is CEO-based salary increase. I'm gonna take you back to the advice that I gave to the board long before they had ever, I think, identified any of the changes. My recommendation was, you need to do three things to be able to attract and hire someone capable of running a complex institution such as this. First of all, you need to be able to offer a salary between six and eight hundred thousand dollars a year. You need to do one or two things. You either need to put in place the same incentive structure that your prior CEO had, for which we have already discussed the payout history round, which is fifteen, thirty, five, and fifty, okay? Or if you didn't do that, that you would do a more conservative annual plan and layer in a long-term plan, okay?
What's the fifteen, thirty-five, fifty?
So this would be percentages of salary.
Okay.
So this corresponds to the threshold, target, maximum goals, okay? And then I said, because this is very typical, that you put in a deferred compensation arrangement, okay, that had an annual contribution of anywhere between twelve and twenty-five percent, depending on, the rates depended on the age of the individual. So, a fifty-year-old at this level, someone approaching sixty at this level, okay?
What's the logic of paying that as opposed to just increasing the base salary? I mean, in the market in general?
Because what you can do is you can attach vesting terms to this, and this becomes your only handcuff. So you could, you could do it at an individual rate and say, you must be here to a certain age, or you must be here in ten years to get that money, okay? So here, here was the original contract for Kevin Spiegel. Here's the salary, okay? The mid-rate, if you're just doing the math, is obviously, that's a bit below. They put in place the same incentive structure, based on my recommendation who, what the prior CEO had. They put in a twelve percent contribution at the low end of this, at the low end of this level, okay? That is Mr. Spiegel's contract, and that's what he came to work here for, okay? So that is the starting point. We talk about executive compensation. As I said earlier, you cannot discuss this topic rationally, particularly around CEO compensation, unless you talk about performance, okay? I've shared with you the incentive results and what was achieved on that dimension. Jennifer also mentioned that there was a very rigorous evaluation process that involved the board, medical leadership and executive management completing a formal survey that we developed on behalf of the board and that we administered on behalf of the board. And those results came into my firm, they were never outside that firm. That, that is our work product, okay? And these were administered between, in this week period of late August to September fifth, okay? There were a series of items, and I don't recall the exact numbers of them, but there was a lot of items, dealing with these... was a, a lot of items, dealing with these areas of leadership. So he was assessed on, to what extent he provided strategic direction, his leadership behaviors, his focus on quality and patient focus, to what extent is he a catalyst and manager of change, to what extent does he do a good job organizing and mobilizing his management team, does he, does he create the appropriate organizational culture, how effective he, is he with, related to governmental relations and affairs, to what extent does he monitor organizational performance, deal with performance issues, and how does he handle medical provider relationships? So out of a possible score of anywhere from zero to five, with five being maximum, I don't recall the exact number of individuals that we had in here, but it was a large number. Kevin, on average, scored a four point five out of a five point zero, okay? That is a very strong rating from the board against this instrument, given all the inputs, okay? That's the board perspective. Just what I find most interesting, right? So you guys are out, you're going to Wall Street, you're trying to sell your bonds, okay? These people don't know anything about compensation or CEO evaluation, right? But they, but they know, they know how to assess the quality of a bond, okay? And so I'll just share with you what, you could read there, because this was literally drafted off their statements, okay? So Fitch, since the new CEO was placed in mid-thirteen, significant financial and operational initiatives have yielded results. Erlanger's produced a solid three point three operating and nine point one operating EBITDA margin for fiscal year, and this performance continues through 2015, okay? Despite current performance above category metal, median levels of the triple-B rating also reflects the relatively recent turnaround in operating performance. Since fiscal 2007, Erlanger has had several consecutive years of operating losses. Fitch met with senior leadership members during its site visit and found the team to be very much in lockstep with the new CEO, Mr. Kevin Spiegel. Fitch believes he's a very dynamic and engaging leader, with demonstrating results in partnering and legislative leadership, physicians and payers, and key stakeholders over a very short period of time, okay? I am not Mr. Spiegel's agent, but I can read, okay? This is, this is the external public's view of. And then Moody's, a different service, looking at the same bonds. Erlanger experienced operational improvement in FY14 under his leadership with new chief executive officer, with additional initiatives adding to existing strategies expected to further improve the performance in the near term. So Wall Street is demonstrating a confidence in your CEO, in your leadership.
Can I just, I mean, like, look, you know, I can imagine some people saying, I don't care what Wall Street thinks, why should we? We live in Chattanooga, Tennessee. Why should we care?
Because you have to sell your bonds. And anybody that's looking to buy bonds is going to be looking at the opinions of organizations like Moody's and Fitch's, and in the, in the rating, because the rating reflects the confidence, the confidence in, in the third pa, third-party independent assessment of the quality of those bonds, or the likelihood that those bonds will ultimately pay back the buyer.
What are we going to do with those bonds?
That's the seventy-one million that we got in to fund the East project, to fund Orthopedic and Cardiac, and to fund the first phase of the children's hospital.
By the way, I don't know if y'all, y'all remember, what did we ask for? A hundred and fifty, the offering was at a hundred and fifty? Investors signed up to buy six hundred and fifty million dollars in bonds. Like, in what universe do you hear of that happening for a public hospital? I, I honestly don't know. Do we hear of that happening?
The underwriter was extremely surprised, there was an oversubscription of four point three times.
So basically, what that's saying is, there were, there were folks out there willing to put up to, even though, obviously, that's not what you end up doing, but up to six hundred and fifty million.
Brett, due to the oversubscription, you were, you and Kevin were able to negotiate better pricing.
Yeah, we actually went by it because there was so much interest and confidence in Erlanger, we were able to go back after the sale and negotiate ten additional basis points of savings on the bonds.
What does that worth?
Still had, I mean, over the, the year of the bonds, it's going to be millions and millions of dollars. And we, when we negotiated that lower rate, none of the major investors backed down.
Right.
Because they had, once you go back and say, okay, I won't-
You're going to pay them less, and they all still stuck with you.
Yeah, because they have that opportunity. Once you sell the bonds, they have the opportunity to say, okay, I want a, I want a bigger discount now, because we had all these people wanting it. They have the opportunity to say, I give up my subscription. And your main investors, which is the people that you've heard of, they did not back out.
Nope.
Now, this is the same market that both the city and the county go to, to sell their bonds.
That's correct, no.
They have to go to New York and Boston.
And they actually get rated by Moody's and Fitch and S and P as well. So it's not a separate thing, it is, it's the same market.
Very simple.
And/or other hospital systems across the United States. This is how, everybody has to do it, and they're competing against the same amount of money. We just perform better than the average bear.
Well, an alternative would be a private placement of those funds.
Right, right.
Versus market bonds. If you're going to market bonds, you're getting a lower interest.
Okay, that's correct. And keep in mind that, the, the, the main thing, the main thing that we heard up there of why there was so much interest was obviously our strategy is very important, so you have to discuss that. But they're saying that we were one of the very few hospitals in the United States, because keep in mind, they rate, they rate any health system that's went to the market for bonds, these are the three rating agencies, I mean, there's nothing more than that. We were the only health system that was able to increase our top-line growth, which is our net revenue, and do the cost-savings initiatives. They stated that most of their, what they're seeing, everyone's working on that cost, doing some of these things that we talked about earlier, about, you know, reducing some of these rich benefit plans, et cetera. They expect that, but they're saying that we were one of very few health systems that were able to not only achieve that, but to also grow our top-line. And that's really based on our new strategy.
And it's market growth and reduction in operating expenses. It was both, and that's why they were so pleased.
So let's deal with, so let me just share the market perspective. Here's the salary where we started. The fifty organizations that I described earlier, the twenty-fifth highest makes this amount, okay? Kevin, twenty-fifth highest. Here's Kevin's position after the increase.
Twenty-fifth, you mean, that's the fiftieth percentile.
Right. So there's fifty people, there's fifty people in this number. The twenty-fifth highest makes that amount of money, okay? Here's where he started, okay? Here's where he finished, okay? So he has moved from, James, I'm not sure what percentile that was, but he's now at the-
Wasn't it like the thirty?
Yeah, it's, it's like thirty-
Thirty-ninth.
Thirty, so he's the, so he's at the thirty-ninth percentile, right? So let's just call it forty. So you got six, so you had thirty people, thirty individuals compensated at a higher level, okay? And so through, through the, through the ten percent adjustment, in one move, gone from this position at, below the median, about ten basis points below the median, to about seven basis points above the median, okay? And this is, this would be what we considered, so this would be the top twenty-five percentile. They'd be paid at this level and above them. So the top, the top ten.
Of the peer group.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Okay. There we go. So that's the move. Tie it all back together, you look at what they earned in incentives, and you take into account the salary increases, after it's all said and done, you have competitively paid executives, and you have better-than-competitively-paid mental managers. You put eleven million dollars in the bank, you got quality, and you funded a party for the, say, part, I don't mean that, because this is a recognition event for your staff. I'm not done yet. Fifteen. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, because there's not a lot, structurally, it hasn't changed. I will point out where the changes are. Emphasis on quality and patient safety, remember, that was fifty-fifty last year? It's now sixty, forty, okay? Sixty percent on quality, forty percent. They've created a level above these directors and managers, which are the central, the center of excellence administrators, these are your service line, your service line leaders. They've created this level. Everything else here has stayed the same. The East campus now will be lumped together with the North campuses. The number of eligibility, the eligibility has increased, instead of ninety-nine people, there are a hundred and twenty-seven. There will be eligibility criteria that they have to meet, or they have to be employed, they have to be in good standing, but that's the projections at this point in time, okay? This plan is going to, here, here's, if you need to understand one thing, or if you want to understand one thing, is that you understand this-
Thank you. Sorry, Jose.
Sorry. The, the fourteen plan started to fund at break even. Why? Because you're, you're expecting a loss, okay? You're not expecting a loss in fifteen. Why? Because these numbers that we're arguing about are now in the budget. Why? Because the CFO thinks there's some certainty around it, okay? So what happens this year is the first eleven million, before we even fund the first dollar incentive, have got to go into your bank. So Erlanger's the creditor on the first eleven million, okay? Oh, and you also have to pay for this unbudgeted staff increase, okay? That's not in this ten point nine, that's another one, two on a cash flow basis, okay? So, so the ten, so the eleven now just became twelve-two, okay? Then we've got to pay for the recognition events. So we're now at twelve-four, okay? This money's got to, it's got to be there before any additional money is paid, okay? And so what's the twelve-four hurdle? What's different is that every incremental dollar above twelve-four will now go into the funding of the plan, okay? Remember before, is that break even? You split fifty-fifty. Well, hard to argue that you ought to split fifty-fifty when you're already getting the first, you know, you got to get the first twelve in essence, okay? Or, or the ten point nine and pay for the one point two. Are there any questions about the economics of the plan?
I, I just want to be sure I'm getting it right. All of the unbudgeted stuff that we've talked about basically eats into that ten point nine.
Absolutely.
And pushes the goal line further out. Every time we do an unbudgeted expenditure, we're pushing the goal line further out before we even start talking about it.
They have to put eleven million dollars on, on, on the bottom line before the first incentive dollar. And that, that's this one point two, and anything else that may come about that's unforeseen in the plan. So you see the same structure, right? Forty percent on the operating goals, in essence, the same, you know, the same goals. They've added sepsis, and I won't, I can't, I can't be more articulate as to why that was in there. They've added length of stay in, in the ED. Other than that, we're looking at similar goals. And again, I won't get into this, but I'm going to show you once again that we start with a baseline, okay? And we have a threshold and target and maximum, and every, at every level of dollar, there's improvement, okay? So the whole point is to continue to try to improve off the baseline, so that, so that in these quality and service actor, service areas, okay, that there is improvement, okay? So not only do you have to fund this thing, okay, you've got to hit these marks. And again, going through, and you'll see that, the structure, okay? So there's nothing here that's loose, there's no discretion.
There's no bonus.
There's no bonus, okay? It is literally all-
It's going to be on my gravestone when I die, Jennifer Stanley, no bonuses.
So I, I only do this is, is to demonstrate that, you know, this, this took a lot of time and a lot of work and a lot of people's heart, and there was a lot of care that was exercised in getting to this, into this point, okay? This is a, it was an incentive plan in fourteen, and it's an incentive plan in fifteen. So I'm done. Any questions?
You were thorough.
I wasn't involved, I'm new on the board of trustees, and so I wasn't involved, so I apologize if this is redundant for you guys, but when you recognize how to, how to compensate or incentivize some of these numbers and targets that were there, more from the financial side of things, it looks to me like if we were experiencing, this is more to Donnie's point he made earlier, if we were experiencing a thirteen and a fourteen million dollar loss, and now you're at a thirteen million dollar to the positive, that's really twenty-six million dollars that had to be made up for that. And so I don't know if that's part of the equation, or if that going forward is something that you recognize, but I think that should be recognized, that that's a, a bigger turnaround than it actually appears when you say thirteen million.
And so let me ask you the question, is one point seven a fair deal relative to twenty-six million dollar target?
Exactly.
Now, it may be, it may be hard going forward, because the numbers are now baked into the budget, because of the associated certainty.
Does anybody have any other questions? Tom, Ed, Phyllis, need anybody have any other questions? You, you've used your quota tonight. Not in states.
Everybody thinks-
You know, I just wanted to say that Jennifer explained a little bit of the, a little bit of a lot of the history behind this incentive plan. And I thought that was very important for the community to understand that this is not something new that we just came up with for 2014. It's something that this hospital has been involved with for quite a number of years. And I think it, I think it goes back, really back to the beginning of the authority in late se, in the late seventies, when, when they recognized that Erlanger was just not going to be an indigent care hospital. And as long as that attitude's in there, then, then they don't worry about incentive payments. But, but making Erlanger much, much more than just an incentive, just an indigent care hospital is, is what we all want, and what we're, what's being done here. And it's very important that these payments be made.
Great observation. Anyone have any other comments or questions before we move on to the last, I think we're ready for the last item to reconsider, Mr. Gentry?
Mr. Chairman, to one point of consideration, Mr. Spiegel's contract was also an increase, pay increase, but also there was a, a change to the auto-renewal provision-
You're right.
-whether there's any discussion regarding-
And let me explain that, I guess, or Greg, you can. I, I'm fairly familiar with that. What that resolution dealt with is if Mr. Spiegel's contract expires in April of 2016, is that correct? I think, if my memory serves me correctly.
That's right.
We have, if it is renewed, it did have a one-year renewal provision in there. We made that a two-year renewal provision. Doesn't mean that we have to renew it, doesn't mean that he has to renew with us, but if we do, it becomes a two-year. And I, just from my perspective, the logic is that we've got a lot going on, and I don't like to operate year by year. And so if we're going to commit to each other, I would have rather had it for at least a two-year period. So that was the other item, thank you. I told you, you're going to have to be the gatekeeper tonight, thank you, Jeff. Any discussion around that? Because that was embedded in the, the pay increase resolution. Disagree? Agree? Likewise?
Well, I, I think if we're, if we're reconsidering, I'll say what I said last time, I think it's important that, you know, we're on a very good path here, leaders are very important, it's a competitive market, we would all be remiss if we did not think about the, the, you know, Kevin's here, things are going well. If we're, like you say, if we're going to commit, let's commit again for two years at a time, especially with the way Wall Street thinks about things. Certainty is a good thing, uncertainty is a bad thing, two years is more certain than one. That was my logic.
Actually, then, can I just make, sorry, one more point? That word uncertainty. I don't know when we'll talk about it, if we'll talk about it. I recognize we're not voting tonight, but I, I do have to say, I hate the fact that we are leaving managers and employees with uncertainty around their pay. We've got thousands of people out there wondering, am I getting my two percent next month? We've got ninety-nine managers wondering, am I going to get paid? Is this board, after seeing all this, going to not pay me? And so I know that tonight, the purpose is discussion, but I want the employees to know that, at least I, I'm sure we all do, but I take it very seriously to remove that uncertainty in the best and most appropriate way we can.
And let me, let me say a comment about that. As, as I said in my letter to, to the trustees and the legislators, we're trying to find some calming ground with the legislators, and we need to listen to them, they need to listen to us. And that's the reason we're not taking a vote tonight, is to try to, to engage in a dialogue with all the stakeholders. Now, will that mean we will vote March or April? That decision has been made, but I share your same concern. If we don't, you know, all this is, is, is kind of a state of flux, and that's why we need to, that's why I'm glad the snow did not prevent us from having this meeting tonight. So, very, very valid point.
Pizza.
Pizza, would you like me to order pizza? Stop for a moment, piles, text somewhere to order pizza. Thank you for the opportunity to bring your attention, another resolution, and I would, I would like to start by saying, I'm going to be brief. I know this has been a long evening, but a very important and thorough and comprehensive, I think, discussion has taken place. I appreciate, we very much appreciate that. This is a resolution not necessarily for new and substantial reconsideration, because it is a new topic, it is a new resolution, but it would be considered through the upcoming thirty to sixty days, so that when the board does reconvene for a vote, that this resolution would come back with this, as a, with the other resolutions as a package. And Kevin and I met with a number of employees, and it is our SEALs, and they are individuals that are truly, and not that all of our employees are not, but they're dedicated and they're loyal, and they come together as a group on a monthly basis to discuss and share information with executives, and also to address other concerns they may have with the organization, and our opportunities around service excellence, and just around improving the operations of the overall organization, from their perspective. With that, Kevin and I, with the discussion around the bonuses or the incentive pay, in the last sixty to ninety days, we believe that it was important that we meet with the SEALs, and we are, we provide information to them and educate them regarding the incentive pay, the incentive plan, but more importantly than that, listen to the SEALs and hear their perspective and their viewpoint. And they were very honest, very open, they had a lot of integrity on authenticity to the comments they made to Kevin and I. And we took their considerations, their comments, into a point of evaluation, into a point of discussion, because one of the questions that we raised, where would you like us to move forward? How would you like us to move forward? And one of the suggestions or ideas that they lifted up to Kevin and I was to implement an incentive plan for all employees, and so that we're all winning together, or if an incentive plan is not paid out, you may say we all lose together. And so the SEALs asked Kevin and I, along with other leadership, to strongly consider a number of options, but specifically an incentive plan for employees. And as Jose has indicated tonight, it's not prevalent. I believe it's twenty-three percent of the marketplace, as far as healthcare organizations are concerned, have an incentive plan for all employees. So there is, you know, some question how effective they are, but we believe it was important in listening to the SEALs, and what concerns or what opportunities they were presenting to Kevin and I, that we come before you and introduce this concept to you, and in the upcoming thirty, sixty, ninety days, we could develop potentially an incentive plan for all employees that might be effective, might be useful, and might be appropriate for Erlanger Health System to adopt. So this is about board support on developing a plan, not here to present the granular aspect of the plan, develop, with the full development of the plan, but to present the concept. I'll be glad to address any questions if you have them.
As I understand it, you're not asking for a vote on this tonight.
That is correct. Not asking for a vote would ask that it be part of the overall package of the four resolutions that were presented earlier.
You're, what you're talking about, though, is taking it from a situation where you give across the board two percent raises to everybody, regardless of their performance.
Right.
To a situation where you're going to give raises of some magnitude based on performance.
Well, it's not necessary, this is not base pay increases. There still would be a program around base pay increases, whether it's across the board or merit-based base pay increases. This is concerning variable pay, just like management, just like executives, and build a variable pay program for all employees. It may use the same metrics that the, that are set for executives and managers and directors, it may look and feel a little different. We have not designed or developed a program at this point, because we wanted to introduce the concept to the board and get the thoughts of the board and the wisdom of the board before moving forward.
But you're, but you are talking about an incentive.
Incentive plan, yes. So this is above and beyond, you know, their base pay, just like for executives. So there would be a, a portion of, you know, pay that would be at risk, based on predetermined goals, just like executives and managers, and it would pay out if those goals and metrics are achieved, then it would not pay out otherwise.
But the intent would still be that it would be part of, it wouldn't pay out, so if the goals and metrics were achieved, but the money wasn't there, would, are you, is your intent that it would work the same way?
It would, it would have to fund itself, so, just like with management and executives. So there is an incentive pool that would be built, you know, the savings throughout the year, so if the metrics were achieved, that savings or the incentive pool would be in place to pay out the, pay out to employees.
Well, given that, oh, sorry.
I was just gonna say, just to clarify, so I'm understanding what's being asked and how the roles and responsibilities work. This is not necessarily something that the board has to vote on, or has to less, or be part of. Y'all, the executive team is more coming and asking for the board, asking the board to be involved in the conception of this, just, so that we're interacting, but this isn't something that the.
Well, the, the actual development of the plan and the design, you are correct, management would have the authority to develop the plan and implement the plan, but as far as payout is concerned, because of, it could be multi-millions of dollars, that it would require board approval.
And what could be, you know, I think it's, I like the direction we're going now to vote on it ahead of time, because you don't want somebody working for an incentive all year long, and then the board says, well, we've got ultimate authority to approve it or not, and then we come along and say, you did well, but we're not going to approve it.
But that's the way it works now. We could do.
It does work like that, and that's why I'm saying, it's a very awkward situation.
Yeah.
And I mean, maybe I'm the only one that feels that way, but I mean, if you develop a plan and you roll it out, the one who has final authority, you come to the board, and after they've earned the incentive, and then you say, put it before the board, well, you've done a great job, but we don't know. But that's the way it wor, our rules work.
Well, I would guess that, no, Phyllis, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask you, do you have a timeline for when this will be developed? If we approve the concept tonight?
Well, it's, we're not suggesting or asking for approval of the concept tonight, we would ask that you consider it along with the other four resolutions that's been addressed this evening, so at a future board meeting, an actual vote would be taken. We would see this being developed and implemented as early as the upcoming fiscal year, so July one, two thousand and fifteen, for the, for fiscal year two thousand and sixteen.
And would you want to do, would you, in the development of it, to engage the MBEC and just the sounding board? Because I'm guessing, I just need to know what to plan for.
We would, we would anticipate, actually, working with management board evaluation committee, and also the board-approved consulting firm Sullivan Cotter, Jose and James, we believe have that expertise at the table as we, we march through and develop this, if the board would provide that opportunity for us to adopt an incentive plan for all employees.
Now Greg, just one other comment. Somebody had mentioned to me, possibly, if y'all did something like maybe town hall meetings, did something that went, where you communicated directly with all the employees rather than just the SEALs, that's a great group, but then it's filtered. And that was said to me, and I just wondered if you can say it.
Absolutely. It's, it's a gratitude, and it prompts us to reengage. In town hall meetings, I can share with you, since Kevin has been here, we tried to do routine town hall meetings, we attempted to do those on a quarterly, every four-month basis. I, I will say, with some of the activities taking place, and the just overall workloads, that we have not been able to do that every quarter, and it's time that we step out. And as a matter of fact, Kevin and I, just within the last couple of weeks, have talked about we needed to have town hall meetings where literally we'll go out with ten, fifteen meetings, go to every campus, invite employees, record one, videotape one, so that employees that are not able to attend, they are able to access the information via videotape.
As we also do with our medical staff.
Yeah. I think that'd be great for the frontline employees to hear directly from.
Thank you for prompting us to.
I know you've got.
To do that. It's important. No, it is, it is very important, and we need to, to keep it a priority. Thank you, Dr. Miller.
Since I chair the committee, I should offer you my thoughts, and this, this is the first time we're hearing about it in more detail. I appreciate that we're, you're using this opportunity, we're using this opportunity and the situation that we've been in recently, to come up with some new ideas, and to think about what could be done differently, because I think we're all excited to hear new ideas and constructive criticism. So first, thank you. Second, and I'll noodle on this some more personally, but one of the things I like about the idea is this notion of everybody being in it together, because one of the things that's just been personally toughest for me in this discussion is that the board is responsible for a limited area of incentives and compensation, and I, I don't, I don't think it's healthy in an organization to have attention of, well, management or employees, or executives or management, or, you know, and thinking about people as opposed to, it's a whole group of individuals serving Erlanger Health System, so, you know, the thing, the aspect of this idea you're asking us to consider that I like, is that it keeps people together in terms of the ability to earn recognition from their, for their performance, as opposed to.
And it's very progressive.
Yeah, it's, for sure, it's, it would be stepping out there.
But not competitionated. That's a rhetorical question.
Actually, that's a good point.
Actually, one of our competitors did do it, and I asked what happened, and I'm not sure what, I think they got bought out.
But it could be very risky. I mean, if you have two or three years, like Erlanger had, and a certain percentage of your entire employee base's salary goes away, how quick are they gonna be to leave and run to somewhere else where their base salary is secure?
For sure, something to think about.
On the other hand, it's not the board or the executive team that interacts with patients and delivers healthcare in this institution. And so, you know, from the front door to the discharge and beyond now, having everybody realizing that they need to bring their A game to the patient experience and care is never gonna be a bad thing.
And we wanted to present the concept, and, and working with, you know, a number of individuals and having voice at the table, employees brought this to our attention, that we think consideration of the concept is appropriate, we need to work through the design, and can we arrive, can we develop a meaningful design? So it's appropriate for the organization, it has the right balance between the organization and management and employees.
Tom?
It just occurs to me that other than the role that the board, that we know plays in Kevin's compensation by virtue of the authority of the bylaws, that some of this is murky about what the board's responsibilities are in terms of other compensation and other issues, so maybe, maybe the board needs to look at the bylaws to see, is that, if our role needs to change, and in what way it needs to change.
Yes. Good comment. Right now, if you step back, you're right, we're doing all this out of, or asking our feedback and, and further our support, but it is not required under the bylaws. You're exactly right.
And just to reiterate, what is, why these resolutions are having come to board, is based on the expenditure policy that the board approved. And since these are considered unbudgeted, then anything unbudgeted over five hundred thousand as far as board approval. Now, you can even go back and look at expenditure policy, you know, if, if, you know, so, I'm just saying that that's the reason, it really isn't the cop requirement in the bylaws, it's the unbudgeted that requires it.
Thank you, you're right, that's a good distinction. You might have anything else, Mr. Gentry?
No, but if I may make a correction, I had informed you that there was one individual that would be speaking this evening, there are three that are, that are speaking, and that, when you are prepared to start the public comments, I'll be glad to share the kind of.
That was what I was gonna do next, as we wait on our pizza to come.
I'll be glad to kind of share the guidelines and.
Oh, you're, that's right, I've asked you to do that, haven't I?
If you'd like me to.
And the order, I think I'm, we're gonna take them in the order that we receive their requests, and I think Dr. Baxter will go first? And you wanna set the ground rules?
Yeah, just a few ground rules, if I may. Dr. Baxter, welcome this evening.
Thank you.
We, we are asking individuals to adhere to approximately three minutes of conversation and comments, or really comments. It's, it's not a time for a question and answer, this is to hear from, from you and the other individuals that would like to speak and make comments and give thoughts to the board.
Welcome up here, is that okay?
You're welcome to come up here. And so, three minutes, and we just ask that everyone be, we ask that everyone be respectful, and also respectful of, I would ask to the facilitator, because if you're running beyond three minutes, I will gently let you know that three minutes have passed, and ask you to conclude your remarks. Thank you.
Thanks. Well, I'll be brief, I'll respect the hour, and, but I want to say, you know, I think we're all in this room for the same passion. We all want to make sure that this hospital delivers world-class care to the patients we look after. And so I think, you know, that's, that's the vision, and I think we, we need to see how we actually accomplish that. I think in the neuroscience world that I'm representing, you know, I can proudly say that I think we're delivering that care, so I think we have to see, you know, what, what has really been behind that story. It's not just me, it's basically what you guys allow us to do every day, so this board, the management team that you put together, and so I think that, you know, that needs to be our focus, and so I really applaud what has happened, I think it's a, really, as we've talked tonight, sorry, I've got a little tickle, I'm not, but, but, you know, as we talk tonight, we basically are, are looking at, you know, what, what has been accomplished here, and I think the celebration in my mind is really almost a historic turnaround of our financial situation, the health of this organization, and I think we, we need to, to focus on that, and to me, you know, we're here obviously to discuss, and discuss openly, different opinions on incentive plans that do that, but I think we have to recognize that, that the, the talent that has come here has actually allowed us as physicians to really provide the care that is world-class for this community. And so I think, you know, we all want to make sure that we have access to, to world-class care, and that's not just gonna happen, I mean, that's not a, that has to be a planned thing, and you, and you need the people that can absolutely execute that. So, so I really want to just say thank you on behalf of neuroscience folks that deliver that care, to the board, to the management team. I definitely, you know, am, am very, very blessed to, to work in this facility, and to work with people like Mr. Spiegel and the team that he has put together, so, so I really don't have anything further than that, just to say, to me, that is, that is our focus, and I would be happy to entertain any questions or anything that are comments or anyone has to say. No, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. I think next in line was Mr. Peterson.
So I guess I want to say that I was, I was a former patient of Erlanger, like five years ago, I broke my wrist, and they, I got hauled down here, and they fixed me up, and so I had excellent care from your hospital, so I have no problems with that. I want to take, I have an issue with your management bonus plan, and I'll look at it from a taxpayer point of view. It's my opinion Erlanger will never make a profit until that nineteen and a half million dollars that you got, well, doesn't, isn't needed anymore, because I look at that as just a bailout, and what I feel is accomplished by you getting that nineteen and a half million dollars was, this country is like eighteen trillion dollars in debt, it grows every day, the principal basically never gets paid back, and I, as a taxpayer, have to pay the interest on it. That's the way I look at the nineteen and a half million. And I was a, when I was an employee, right now I'm a super prior, but I never received a bonus to do my job, you know? I did the job I was paid to do, I tried to do the best I could be, and you seem to put a lot of merit into a bonus plan, and to me, that depends on the type of individual you are, you're gonna, should naturally want to do a good job. The people made, approved your bonus plan structure, to me, they made an error in including the nineteen and a half million dollars in, as a calculation of somebody getting the bonus, because that was never in your, your operating budget before, and just because you got it in there this year, I don't see why that is, should have anything to do with your bonus plan. That's about all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Ms. Eller.
Good evening. I'm Pat Eller, and I've been at the hospital for forty-plus years. Needless to say, I've had, seen many changes and cycles over this period of time. I remember when, where we're meeting tonight, this was the building which housed the nursing school. I remember when Will Street almost ran right through the gift shop. I remember when the one and only intensive care unit was on West Wing Six, and had a capacity of only ten patients. I also remember when Children's Hospital was located in the Glenwood section of our town. I remember when there was no Miller Eye Center, no professional office building, no women's hospital, and no facility in the Red Bank area. I remember having only two administrators, a nursing service office that was where my office is now. I remember when I first came to working, to work in the medical staff office, we only had three hundred and fourteen physicians on the medical staff. I remember the challenges we have faced over the years during surveys by various regulatory agencies. Matter of fact, many years ago, one chief of staff's legacy was the huge number of paper boxes he carried with him to the joint commission in Chicago in order to challenge a particular survey's results. And I might add, with his due diligence, he successfully won our accreditation back, hands down. I remember reengineering, known as the R-word around here, and how that process literally gutted this organization's workforce. I remember bringing on life force. I still get cold chills when I see it lift off the ground, or hear it fly over my house. There are so many more events or milestones that are so important to this institution that there is not sufficient time to rehearse these with you tonight. What I do want to stress is the importance of this hospital. It is important to our patients whose lives were altered in some form or fashion by the treatment they received and continue to receive. It is important to these families whose lives were changed because of that outstretched hand, or that hug from a caregiver, just as their burden became almost too heavy to bear. It is important to our community in that we extend a helping hand to those who cannot afford health insurance. We also provide services to those who are incarcerated in our local prison system. It is important to our children, as we have the only children's hospital for miles around, and all the wonderful, special, highly sophisticated service that they provide. It is important to the future of the health care industry in that we have one of the best teaching programs in this state. I want to say thank you to our physicians, who are here day in and day out treating our patients, and helping families through their loved ones' time of illness, whether planned or unexpected. I wanna say that I'm also thankful to a dedicated and caring group of nurses who administered their healing touch to our patients. They also have a vested interest and a need for the viability of this institution. I wanna thank our management and executive management team for their unfailing dedication to this institution. If we added all the work hours spent by these individuals for one week, one month, or even one year, it would be astronomical. I do not think anyone would believe it. It always amazes me as to how they make decisions based on the acuity of patients, or even try to determine how much linen one nursing unit needs in a twenty-four-hour period. I wanna personally and publicly thank Mr. Spiegel for your leadership. He came to us when we were down, down in admissions, down in surgeries. We, we were just down altogether, we were financially strapped, and had not been able to adequately invest in our capital equipment budget for years. We were almost ready to break our bond covenants with our bondholders, we were down. Mr. Spiegel, thank you for your genuine concern, your passion, and your drive to set the sails of, on this huge ship in the right direction, to bring us to a positive bottom line, to tirelessly pursue an infusion of federal dollars to help us recapitalize. Mr. Spiegel, we're feeling the south winds blow, and it is a great feeling, thank you. Finally, let me say to the board, thank you for your caring about Erlanger Health System. Each and every one of you have demonstrated your desire, your desire for dedication to this institution through the endless hours that you have spent in dealing with issues, some pleasant and some not so pleasant, and all without pay. You have been the ones to make the tough decisions, and the buck stops with you. What true public servants you are. Thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Wow.
Thank you all. Is there, I will actually open the mic up if anybody else has anything to say. Very short, I know time, it is getting late, but I wanna make sure that we have a very good, I will take that as if we were ready to move on then. Thank you. Back on the agenda then, Dr. Kern, Chief, Chief of Staff report?
I have no report.
Thank you. I don't think Dr. Seberg is here.
Dr. Lambiasso.
Oh, Lambiasso. I still got you, I know.
I know, I know, it's sort of a downgrade, but-
That's okay.
You got there after Lambiasso.
That's okay, I get that a lot.
Dr. Seberg asked me to convey three things. The first is, that March twentieth is a big day in the College of Medicine, not only is it match day for the medical students and for our programs, where, where the selection for our training programs occurs, and for all of our medical students know where they're gonna be going and doing their training. The second thing is, it's also the Alpha Humanitarian Award and Grand Rounds, which is at eight o'clock in Pro Basco, followed by a reception here. We have a guest speaker from New York University speaking, who's pretty well-renowned, and so if you, if you, we'd like everybody to come on and report that. And then the, the, the third piece of information is actually to celebrate, the cardiology fellowship was approved by the residency review committee and the ACGME, and it was credited for, I guess, three fellows to start in, in the next fiscal year, and this just represents just a tremendous amount of work by Chuck Campbell and his team, and we're very, very excited, and hopefully it's the first of several fellowships in the Department of Medicine. That's my report.
Very good, thank you very much. Mr. Spiegel. Mr. Chairman, thank you so much, and I'm also going to be brief. Some of the things that management has been looking at is the replacement of our IT infrastructure, and what our plan is to ready at the April board meeting is the purchase of a new total IT system in our health information system. I, I will be prepared at our April meeting to have a detailed presentation for your consideration of another capital unbudgeted-
Seems like to be the word of the night, unbudgeted.
But it's, it's, you know, our, our, our system has come to the end of its life, and, and it is probably one of the things that we need to rely on the future, and put in technologies and infrastructure in this hospital that's greatly needed, and probably we've never been in a position other than now, so we can go forward in improving patient care, quality enhancement of what we do. I do wanna acknowledge the neuroscience team, Dr. Blaise Baxter and Dr. Tom Devlin, and their physicians, and everything that they do in trials, they really were instrumental in the development of devices that really saved people's lives, and I think this board needs to acknowledge what they have really contributed, not only to this community, but in medicine in general, and that Erlanger is really on the cutting edge of setting the new standards of medical care for this nation. And the other thing is also to add to Dr. Lambiasso's comment about, this is the second announcement in the last year, the first was about a urology residency program here, robotic urology program, that has kinda set the pace for the educational environment. Now, we were just informed by the ACGME and the RRC that it's gonna improve Erlanger in a cardiac residency program. Credit needs to go to all of the UT faculty that worked on the application, and Dr. Charles Campbell for his leadership and prior experience with the RRC, that this is one of, I thought, urology and Dr. Singh's was the fastest approval process, that I think now cardiology has beat that world record, and that's something that we should all be proud of, the academic mission that we are here, not only the acknowledgement of cardiology, the Department of Medicine, but the University of Tennessee and Erlanger's partnership working together to train the future doctors of tomorrow. Mr. Chairman, that's my report.
You did keep it short. Thank you very much, a lot of good things happening. Does, let's see, any other trustee have anything else to bring before the committee? Yes?
I wanted to, I just wanted to raise an issue. DC 31st of 2014 was the point in time where Erlanger ended its benefits for early retirees. As I understand it, there's about a hundred and fifty people involved with that. I know that they have different opportunities, different, they were given, they were given notice, and they were given different opportunities to go to, to get, to get coverage, but some of those people, some of those people are having a difficult time with it, and I, I would just like to ask our management if they would go back and take a look at what they, what has taken place, and see if some way they can assist these individuals that are having a difficulty in trying to get placed in place, to deal with it, to deal with their, deal with this issue. It's been brought up by several people that, in this group, that are needing assistance, and so I just asked our management to, to take a look at it, and take a look at what's taking place, and see what can be done.
Very good. Anybody have anything else with that?
Well, wait.
Oh, Nega, yes.
Our guest, thank you so much for hanging in there with us while we're chatting tonight.
Three hours, and we meet, we expect him back next month.
Do this every month.
Do this every month, Thursday night, and normally we don't like him, but lasts this long, but we'll see you next month.
Yeah.
We'll bring him pizza.
We'll bring him pizza. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.